There's Karen.
Okay, Mr. Marshall. You have a quorum of the board. Your attendees are coming on in. We are recording. I made you the co-host to this meeting, so I think we're good to go.
Okay, thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of December 4, 2024. My name is Doug Marshall and is Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I am calling this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is accessible on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting, or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio, video, recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. All right, do we have Bruce Coldem yet? I do not see him. Fred Hartwell.
Fred Hartwell is here.
Thank you. Lawrence Clutz.
Present.
Jesse Major.
Present.
Johann, Johann Newman.
Present.
Karen Winter.
Present.
And I, Doug Marshall, am present. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment, and I will call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the planning board chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the planning board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. Okay, time is 6:36, and we'll go right into the first item on the agenda, minutes. Pam, I did not see any minutes in the packet, and am I correct? There are none tonight?
You are correct, and I'm going to be off-screen just for a minute here to try and help Bruce get in. Okay?
Okay, great. So Bruce is out there somewhere?
He's out there. We're going to get him in here.
Okay, great. Okay, we can now go to the public comment period. As I said, this is for comments regarding items not that that do not appear later in the agenda. So any comments about the U Drive project, U Drive LLC, anything about the site plan review on the high school, anything about the University Drive overlay district, about accessory dwelling units that can that should wait. So if you have a public comment you want to make about something else, anything else, now is the time to put up your hands. I will remark while waiting for hands to go up that it looks like Bruce Coldem has joined the meeting here at 6:37.
Yay.
All right, we have one hand raised from Janet Keller. Why don't we bring her over?
Hi, Janet.
Hi, Janet. All right, so this is a time for comments not about things later on the agenda, and I know you did send in a letter about something later on the agenda.
Okay, so I don't have anything else to say until we get to later on in the agenda. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment at this time? While you're waiting, I guess I'll read the names of the people who are that I can see in the attendees. They are Janet Keller, Becca Briggs, Bill Hunter, Bob Parent, Christine Brestrup, Elizabeth Veerling, K.L. Donabedian, N.L. Crom, Pamela Rooney, and Pial Patel. So I don't see any other hands. And I guess I will conclude there really aren't any other public comments on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Okay, so time is 6:39. Our next public hearing, our first public hearing is posted for 6:55. We obviously have about 25 minutes or no, 15 minutes until that time. So we'll go jump to items later on the agenda and hopefully fill up that time productively. So why don't we go down to item eight, old business topics not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours in advance. Pam or Nate, are there any old topics of old business?
I don't have anything, Nate. Have we talked about anything?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Likewise, for new business not anticipated?
Nate, I have the I have the same thought that no, we haven't thought of anything we wanted to bring up, old or new. Do you agree?
He nods yes.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Form A and R subdivision applications, anything?
No, we don't have one tonight, but you should have one in front of you on December 18.
Okay. ZBA applications, anything of interest to the board?
I don't have any to talk about, Nate, do you?
For the ZBA? No, Wayfinders is going through the process. Shoe Spray Road Solar may be coming back next month. It was continued. You know, and there's other applications. The ZBA is actually pretty busy right now, but you know, those are probably the two bigger projects.
Okay. SVP, SPR, SUB applications?
No, we don't have any brand new ones that are waiting. We probably have some in the pipeline that haven't exactly been handed to us, so nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Committee and liaison reports. Starting Bruce with you, anything you learned about PVPC in the last six weeks?
Other than my report last time, I thought there was a meeting last week, but it turned out that it was an executive committee meeting, and I'm not on the executive committee, although actually Jack is. So whereas I thought I would be reporting something, I I report only that I misunderstood the the purpose of the meeting.
Okay. We don't have any CPAC report since we don't have a representative at this time. Design Review Board, Karen.
We did, we have not met since the last time I reported, so no.
All right. Okay. I, at this point in the meeting, I don't have a report as report of chair. Nate, anything you, general announcements from staff?
Yeah, I'd say that downtown design standards, there's a an online survey again for residents and community members to complete, and there is a, you know, a public meeting being scheduled for, gosh, I'm blanking on the date.
December 9. The 9th.
Yes, yeah. So you can, you know, members are, you know, welcome to attend that. That's still, you know, that'll be ongoing for a number of months still. There's the housing needs assessment that will be coming back to the planning board to look at as part of the housing production plan that we're hoping to finish next June. And then the town's still working on the open space and recreation plan. Again, it's something that the planning board will need to review, and we hope to get something to you in January for that. So those are two town planning documents that will have some draft form in the next, you know, hopefully in January to discuss.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. I see two hands, Jesse, and then Fred, and then Bruce, I thought, but he his went away. Okay, Jesse?
Just a comment on the committee and liaison reports. I don't know if you want to continue to have the subcommittee on there. It wasn't on there. We did meet last week. You'll hear about the consequence of that meeting later on tonight, but nothing else to report.
Okay. Yeah, you're, the committee was on there for a couple of meetings, and now it's not on there.
I can always just raise my hand if there's stuff to report, which is fine, too.
Okay.
I was just going to move to adjourn.
Well, we could adjourn for 10 minutes and come back. Everybody could go finish their dinner.
Take a break. Mr. Marshall, did you want to remind people about January? We will not have a meeting on January 1, but instead we will have our first meeting in January on January 8.
Yeah, you should all have gotten the 2025 schedule from Pam. You know, we don't usually have to change right out of the gate when we get into the new year, but this year we didn't think anybody would want to come, come do this on January 1. Bruce?
This is actually serious, I think. Did everybody else get the typical Zoom link, you know, that comes about five days before and then 24 hours before, and then an hour before? Did they?
I did, yeah.
I didn't, and so that's the first time ever, and I I wonder why that is, and it didn't go to junk or anything like that. It just didn't come. Pam, could you, because that was, I just assumed that it was there somewhere, and I, when I looked for it, I realized I didn't have any of them.
Sure, I can tell you that what I do is the day, like, so tomorrow I will be sending you your invitations for the very next meeting. So when Chris called me to let me know you didn't have a link, you know, I was going through the backend to try to get to you, but you already came on board. So I jumped right back into the meeting, so I'm going to take a look at it, but I will look at it tomorrow. I mean, there is a chance, I hate to report this, but it could be human error. I could have omitted you. That is the only thing. Like, if you didn't get it at all, I'm questioning whether, you know, I go through a list, and I'm wondering, you know, if it is human error, and I omitted you. So I would say moving forward, if you don't get that, those reminders, if you can reach out to me, do so so that I can, I can help you a little bit sooner. I, I, yeah, I will just say that anything people can do for checks and balances in terms of my work right now, my plate is pretty full. And I do a pretty good job of dotting all the i's and crossing the t's, but I, I need reminders, too, so please feel free if you don't get.
I will, but let me just ask, because I didn't get any of the three, does that tell you, does that give you any useful feedback?
Well, as soon as you said that you didn't get any of the three, I went, uh-huh, that's probably human error, so. And I will, I will check into it tomorrow, and I will let you know.
Okay. So I'm wondering if folks want to take a seven or eight-minute break and come back at 6:55. Fred, I see your hand.
Yeah. Since we have a little bit of dead time here, I had a this afternoon, my normal procedure is before the meeting to go to the, the publication packet for the meeting. And I had a devil of a time getting my printer. This has never ever happened before, getting my printer to print out a couple of the documents. And I, I finally, after three times, I was able to get it to print out in a bizarre way. I would, I would tell it to print, and the printer would print the first five pages, and then without missing a beat, would start back at the first page and print out the first seven pages, and then keep printing, and then print out the entire packet. I, I can't explain how that could happen, and I'm just wondering whether any of the other members had that happen to them, or whether this is somehow unique to, to my computer and printers.
Well, anybody else, if you, did anyone else try to print out from the packet?
Fred, did you, did you first of all download the thing as a PDF onto your desktop and then print the PDF?
No, I didn't. I just, I've never had to. I just went to a site and clicked on it, and it arrived in my computer, which means presumably there was a PDF on my computer, but anyway, when I went to print it, it first failed, and then it, it finally agreed to print under a bizarre way, so.
Okay.
Never had that happen before.
No idea.
Fred, you may need to do a software update. We printed it at town hall and didn't have any trouble getting it printed.
Yeah.
But Karen, did you have trouble with it?
I didn't print out the packet because I got it, but the, the two other things, the planning board meeting schedule and and the addition to the ADU, I printed those out, and the same thing happened to me as to Fred. Usually, you know, in the past, I've just been able to put print and it printed out. This time I had to play with it and download it as a PDF, so it's being sent maybe a little bit in a different way, and you do have to change it into a PDF and then go and print it out. So it was a little bit different this time.
Good feedback.
Make any kind of IT sense to you?
Oh, did you ask, you cut out a little bit, Pam. Were you asking me?
Yeah, I'm asking you if like this makes sense to you. I mean, I know that our programs at work are getting tight, 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 tight security-wise, and I'm just curious if, I mean, I'm going to reach out to IT tomorrow, but.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it could be the difference being on like a Windows or, you know, PC or Mac, if we send a Word document, and maybe we should convert it first to a PDF. I don't, I don't know. It is interesting to hear. I, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
I think it's a good policy always to send PDFs rather than words, because when you open a Word in a different platform or a different place, the formatting can change a little bit, and that could be rather important, but the PDF locks all that up, and so there's no real need for us to be editing things that you're sending us, unless, unless that's specifically requested. So I think it would be a safe and useful policy to simply send PDFs, and then, then you know what the recipient is going to be seeing.
You're correct, Bruce, and that is my standard practice to only send PDFs unless I'm working with somebody on a document. So sometimes I might send things to the chair that are a Word document, but I do try to always send PDFs. So I'll do my best to work with IT to get a look at this. I do know that when we open PDF documents through at the town, we do have to choose a viewer. So that may be something Karen and Fred that you're going to need to do as well, but I'll look into it and try to report back. Thank you.
All right. Well, we have two minutes. Folks, you can stay here, you can turn off your camera, you can wander off, but please be back here in two minutes if you need to wander off.
Doug, maybe I should just take this moment to declare that, as you already know, and I think Nate does as well, that I intend to recuse myself from the high school track portion of the meeting, because my wife and I own a house. It's not where we live, but it's where my mother-in-law used to live, and we own it, and we rent it, and it's within the 300 feet, and I've been advised that I should recuse myself unless I go through a rather somewhat elaborate set of hoops. And I did spend quite an amount of time, two hours, I think, reviewing all of those documents. There's a lot there. And I concluded that from my point of view, there wasn't enough. It seemed to me fairly clear, comprehensive, and thorough piece of work, and, and I, I didn't have a position that I wanted to.
Are you, or are you commenting?
I'm explaining why I'm recusing myself. It's not out of laziness. I mean, I could have, I could have taken the trouble to establish bona fides, I suppose, and I'm explaining why I didn't do that, which I guess is probably not something I should be doing, so I will recuse myself.
All right, well, we're at 6:55, and you're probably going to have to say that again when we get to that in that part of the
Oh, okay. Oh, all right, it's.
Okay, so we are now at 6:55. We can continue with the hearings that are published. One note for Pam and Nate, we should, we should post these hearings starting anytime after 6:30, even if we think we're going to start a little bit later, so I'd rather not have to kill too much time. Okay, so in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding SUB 2025-02, U Drive Amity LLC, University Drive at Amity Street, request approval for a three-lot preliminary subdivision plan under Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 81L and 81S, map 13B-18, 27, and 28, and 54 in the BL and RD zoning districts. Do we have any board member disclosure? I do not see any hands raised for any disclosure. Nate, I think you probably have the opening statement on behalf of the applicant.
Sure, the applicant has requested that the hearing be continued till January 8. They're not able to be here tonight. And so you know, we would ask that the board, you know, move and vote to continue that without any testimony or, or public comment, and then we'll, we'll pick it up on the 8.
Okay. All right, so we have a request from the applicant to continue this hearing to January 8. Pam, can I assume that the time would be 6:35?
At this point, I would say 6:35. Nate, I just want to double-check with you, January 8. I, the only thing I have on there is this is, is this, is this project, so we could do 6:35. And if anything else comes up or gets continued, it would just be after that.
Yeah, I may have a conflict on the 8, so we could either do it the 8 or the following meeting. I mean, I would, we could just keep it the 8 right now, and
Yeah, we can help any, we can continue it that night, too.
Yeah, okay, so I would.
I see one hand from Jesse.
Sorry, can wait till after this. Apologies.
Okay. All right, Bruce?
Move that the hearing be continued to January 8 at 6:35 PM.
All right, second, Johann?
Yep, I'll second.
Okay, great. Any other comment from board members on this? We are hoping not to have much conversation tonight, and we're not taking public comment, no, no presentation from the applicant. So we'll just go ahead and vote on a continuation. Starting with you, Bruce.
I.
And Fred?
I.
Lawrence?
I.
Jesse?
I.
Johann?
I.
Karen?
I.
I'm an I as well. That's seven in favor. No opposition or abstention or absence. All right, thank you all. Time is 6:59. We will go to the next item on our agenda. Another public hearing. Let's see. Nope, we can't go to that yet. That's advertised for 7:05. As is the third public hearing for tonight. All right, Jesse?
I was just going to point out, so in the electronic packet for the first hearing, there was a comment slash letter from Cindy Jones, which content was really about University Drive overlay. So I was wondering if it just got put in the wrong place. Just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that in case they wanted to see it in reference to University Drive. That's all. The heading was this, but the content was not, so I don't know what you do with that, but just wanted to.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I guess if, I mean, I guess the other thing we could do would be to start talking about accessory dwelling units, Nate, and just have that conversation.
Sure, it could be a really quick conversation for five minutes. That sounds good.
Well, we could, can go as long as we want, and
Again.
The other hearings can start late.
They can. The, if we wanted to talk about ADUs, there had been, you know, after the last meeting, staff made further revisions simplifying the draft bylaw to take into account what the planning board had discussed, and so really it's just one unit with, you know, 19 general requirements in the bylaw. You know, nothing, you know, nothing else. The Housing Subcommittee then proposed something that, you know, was also sent out. I will say, you know, I'll reiterate again that we do have a current bylaw, and so when February 2 rolls around, when this takes effect, you know, even if we move the, the current ADU bylaw. you know, even if we move the, the current ADU bylaw forward, it probably wouldn't be ready for February 2nd. I mean, maybe if it was. Maybe, but unlikely. So we do have a bylaw in place that has standards and conditions. Um, anything that's inconsistent with the state law can't be used by, by the building commissioner. And so, you know, where we require owner occupancy or a special permit, that can no longer be the case. But, you know, we do have some, uh, design standards and some other conditions that could be, um, uh, used. And so, you know, we're not totally without some regulations and, you know, concerning ADUs. Um, I will mention too, that the definition of an ADU is half the size of a dwelling unit, nine, or 900 square feet or whichever is smaller. And so, uh, you know, if you had a 1,200 square foot home, you'd only be allowed to have a 600 square foot ADU. Uh, you couldn't do a 900 square foot. And I, you know, my guess is the state really wanted to have the accessory dwelling unit be an accessory, you know, structure and use to the primary dwelling unit, principal dwelling unit. And so, you know, they're trying to do that through size and maybe they also consider that that size limitation could, uh, influence the number of occupants. And so, um, you know, if you have a, a, you know, a 2,000 square foot home, you still, you can only get up to 900 square feet. And so, you know, our current bylaw allows up to 1,000, uh, and we're not proposing that. So we're just using the state definition. And so I just want to make that point. And so, you know, even if it was a really big, single-family home, the, the largest ADU that could be allowed would be 900 square feet. If it's less than, you know, what gets you 900 square feet for half, that's what it is, right? So 1,800 or less, you have whatever the half your, your floor area is. That does, you know, based on building code, that doesn't include, uh, it's only habitable space. So storage space, basements, attics, porches are not included in that calculation. And so you could have an ADU that has 900 square feet of habitable space and then has a crawl space and a front porch and a back porch. Uh, and so it looks like, you know, it is a bigger, looks like a bigger structure than 900 square feet, but that's the way, um, it is worded now. There's really no, the legislation doesn't provide a definition for what the, you know, how the square feet is calculated. And the workshops by the state, they reference the building code and so we already have that in our bylaw. Um, you know, I don't know if we need to get into, you know, too many specifics, but, you know, we're only allowing one ADU. It has to be on a single-family property. But, you know, an existing duplex or townhouse, uh, does not, um, would not allow an ADU, would not be permissible. Um, and then I think, you know, the other changes really are ones that the board had discussed. Uh, you know, um, trying to see what, what would be really new. Um, you know, we didn't provide any, there was some discussion about having a lot coverage calculation or maximum or number of parking spaces for an ADU, but we, you know, we did not have, you know, any standards or requirements for that. I think, you know, there was a discussion about, you know, someone could have a big driveway and they could put parking for the single-family home and not say it's for the ADU and it just becomes something that, we don't regulate, the town doesn't anyways, on a single-family property. And so, you know, we don't regulate how big a driveway is or how many parking spaces there are for any single-family home. And, you know, don't think it's necessary for an ADU as it's not a second, you know, principal use on a property. Uh, and so, you know, it was in the packet, it's online. Uh, the other changes, some of them are, you know, minor, but it really is just, you know, taking into account what the board had discussed and putting it in, you know, in the bylaw form.
All right. Um, so I see Jesse and Fred and Karen's hands. Um, I guess I'm suspecting that you guys would want to bring up the modification that the housing subcommittee proposed. Um, and the way our agenda is structured at the moment, we have the ADU discussion and then we have general housing discussion where we could discuss definition of a student home. And, um, so, but in fact, I think these are all, all three of these topics are, are really all interrelated. So, um, before we get to the student home discussion, um, does anyone have comments about the draft that Nate has prepared? And want, you know, anything you want to change about that or, you know, argue for or against it or whatever? Times, okay, so Fred, you've got some, something about something other than the student home.
It's not that simple. Uh, the, uh, I want to encourage the planning board to move quickly on this because of the, uh, what the zoning sub, what the, uh, housing subcommittee came up with was a definition of a student home. And that is extraordinarily relevant and pressing because it operationalizes a limitation that does more than anything else that we can do to mitigate the disallowance in the state law against a requirement for owner occupancy.
So Fred, we'll get to that. We'll get to that. Right now I'm just asking, do you have any comments about what Nate has drafted?
Yeah, I don't want to go ahead with what Nate has drafted without the other.
Not proposing that. Okay, so you're fine with what Nate has, was dra, has drafted.
Yeah, so far. And, and this is very pressing.
Okay. Thank you. Karen?
Yeah, so this is, this is going to be, uh, these are the requirements and it's by right. And then there is that one problematic, number six, under general, uh, requirements. Who is the one that judges whether it is compatible with the dwelling and the character of the neighborhood? Who's judging that? I think one of the questions that was given to us by, uh, uh, somebody wrote in question there too. And I'm not sure who judges this.
So Nate, the way you've structured this, I assume it would be, uh, probably the building official? Uh, Rob, Rob Mora or the building.
Yeah, the building commissioner with consultation from staff. So something that's by right doesn't go to, you know, permitting board. And so, um, uh, yeah, it would be staff. I mean, we would, you know, look at the neighborhood, apply the designer view principles. I mean, I guess if we wanted to, um, you know, what, the, the way it reads now is it says an accessory dwelling unit shall be designed so that the appearance is compatible with the existing single-family dwelling and with the character of the neighborhood. Um, you know, and that's, that's the one general requirement. And, you know, so that, you know, um, you know, I don't know if people feel comfortable adding language about, you know, following the designer view principles or anything there. But again, that's just, it's a staff, it's an administrative process because this is a by right, uh, application. Not, you know, there's no site plan review or any review by a permitting board. The building commissioner, the building commissioner will say can always ask for guidance from the design review board or, you know, ask for input from others, right? So there's always a process for staff to ask for some, you know, additional input. Um, but, you know, um, right now it is just an administrative decision.
Okay. And I guess there's no other way you could really state this. So, um, and the other question I had is, Nate, you know, at the present, I think you can build an ADU larger than the 800 or 900 if it's handicapped accessible, right? There are some exceptions.
Oh, well, that's a, that's the, that's Amherst local bylaw, which would then no longer be in effect. And so.
Oh, so, so under no circumstances can you build 1,000 square feet?
Right.
Wow.
Under this proposal.
Right. And I, you know, I will say after the last discussion, I talked with the building commissioner and there's really no requirement or ADA kind of guidelines on what a, what it's an accessible, single-family dwelling means. And so, you know, and, and, you know, when, when the planning board reviews a project and we have to have, you know, certain turning radii and, you know, bathroom sizes and an accessible route, none of that applies to a single-family dwelling. And so, you know, typically the building commissioner will say, okay, our doorway is wide enough, but it's not as if, uh, they have to show that they're meeting all the strict ADA or AAB requirements in terms of counter height or all those things, door pulls and all the, you know. So, uh, you know, after the discussion, you know, the staff said, well, really we don't get to that level of detail. And so it's, you know, we had it in there because we, it was a way to try to have bigger units, knowing that, you know, someone that may need an accessible unit needs more space. But because of the way the state legislation works, it's really it difficult to say, well, let's do 1,000 square feet for an accessible unit when we really can't confirm whether or not it is truly accessible. So.
All right. Any other comments about, okay, okay, Jesse and then Bruce?
Yeah, it's, it's really, there's a problem I see in need of a solution relating to the character of the neighborhood and the parking issue. And I know that the terms really refer to the structures, but I also see the parking issue as character of neighborhood problem. This came up in our last discussion with some of the public comments. Um, but it's even a problem now. You know, there are house, single-family houses that have eight cars parked filling the whole side yard. And it very much changes the character of the neighborhood. And so I've tried to look around for other places where they've tried to have some kind of regulation on this. I've come up totally blank. I'm sure I'm not looking in the right places, but I just wanted to put that out there as a comment that I do think planning board or, I don't know who else should try and address this because I, I think there is potential for it to really have significant impact um, in certain areas. That's all.
Okay. So Nate, that was discussed some last week. Did you think anymore about that?
Yeah, um, like I said, we don't regulate parking on single-family properties. And so, you know, in the bylaw now, we talk about having a parking management plan and a parking plan that would be reviewed by staff. You know, no additional curb cuts or driveway cuts unless allowed by public works. No parking in the front setback except as allowed currently in the bylaw. And so we do have some provisions, but, you know, really we're not, you know, we're not saying you can only have two parking spaces for an ADU or a single-family home because, you know, the, the idea is that it's, it's an accessory use and there could be, you know, they could just say the parking is for the other unit on, you know, other single-family home. It's, it's really difficult to kind of tease out what, you know, which parking is for which unit. And so, um, you know, and then typically to do driveways, uh, you know, driveway is an improved surface. So it's a defined term. So there is some lock coverage, you know, if they exceed it, then we can do something about it. But typically to pave a driveway, there's no permit or review by the planning department or the building commissioner necessarily, right? So if someone wants to add a little three-foot strip along their driveway or something, we don't, you know, we don't typically get involved on a single-family property. So it's a really difficult thing to kind of regulate when there's not, you know, a threshold that triggers much.
All right, uh, Bruce.
Um, I, I think, uh, having a building, having the building commissioner prepared to weigh in on the character of the neighborhood, particularly given the resources in the town, the designer review board staff and, and so forth. Um, I, I think that's a perfectly satisfactory solution. Very often, I mean, we've had this with the, uh, on the historic district commission, um, that the building commissioner wasn't so prepared to, uh, do things and, and we had to hold public hearings in order to, uh, make determinations on, on, on rather small things, we thought, but nonetheless, that's our job. And ultimately we, we created a, a specific list of things that the building commissioner could, uh, have so-called executive authority, you might say, on so far as the local historic district commission is concerned. So I think that if, if Mr. Mara is prepared to, um, act in this capacity and as Nate said, with the support available and bearing in mind that this are very small buildings, you know, they, they potentially will be a number of them, but there haven't been a lot of them so far. Um, so it seems to me that this is a perfectly satisfactory arrangement until proven otherwise. Um, and if it is proven otherwise, either because Mr. Mara decides that it's a little more onerous than he thought or because there's an up, uh, uh, welling of, uh, uh, constructive, hopefully opposition to it, then we have a problem to solve. But at the moment, I think this is a perfectly sound and intelligent solution and a quite responsible one. And thank Mr. Mara for preparing, you know, being prepared to, uh, take initiative in this. So I don't think we need to do anything other than what's in, um, section six of that, uh, that, 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 the, the current document.
All right. Um, boy, there was another hand up for quite a while and then it went away. I think it was Karen's. So you no longer are wanting to comment. Are there any other comments on the draft other than the student house, home issue? Um, okay. All right. I don't see any hands uh, about this as is written. So, okay, so Nate, um, I think, you know, what you've got is generally acceptable with the exception of this student home conversation. So let's move on into that.
Uh, yeah, sure. I just want to say quickly like where we are in this process. And so, you know, right now, kind of like with University Drive, this is, you know, we could just call it a planning topic that if the board likes it, would recommend it to go to council as a referral, as a zoning amendment. So, you know, right now it's a, you know, like a, we could say it's a draft zoning amendment, but it's really not in a, a, you know, an official zoning amendment yet. So what we're working toward is having the board, you know, vote this to council and then they would refer it back to the board and CRC for public hearings. And then, you know, it's officially a zoning amendment, kind of like what's happening with University Drive. And so, um, you know, there is still a process to go to make comments. Um, I think we're getting, you know, close, uh, you know, town meetings have voted, uh, bylaws. There hasn't been any determinations yet by the AG's office, but, you know, we're, we're assuming that in January, there'll be some guidance in terms of what is acceptable in terms of a reasonable regulation. Uh, but nothing, you know, nothing yet.
And it sounds like you don't consider this an absolute crisis that we need to act quickly immediately on. You were hoping to get something in place by Jan, by, by February 3rd. But if we, if, if we don't, you know, we already have our existing bylaw that can be selectively, uh, implemented.
Right. Yeah. I think, you know, some communities don't have anything, right? So if someone came in, right now we still have some conditions about design, appearance, um, parking, you know, stairways and fire egresses on the side. And so we have some standards and conditions that we can use. Um, right. And so some communities, if they don't have anything, then all it is is just a building permit application and there's no way for any review or, or anything like that, but even by staff. And so, you're right. I, I mean, I think it's urgent. I don't think it's a, you know, um, you know, necessarily, um, something we have to get too worried about, but I would like to move it forward just so say, you know, if we had a goal in mind, say by, you know, sometime in March to have this in place or April 1 or something, I feel comfortable. You know, I don't want to think we could just take four more months doing this, but, you know, say, let's try to get a bylaw in place by April 1.
Okay. All right. So then, uh, Jesse, why don't you, uh, introduce the, uh, student home proposal?
Great. Thanks, Doug. Um, so hopefully you all had a chance to read, but was sent around. And, um, I would, I would like to couch the introduction a little bit differently, um, than in, in terms of the, this ADU law change. And as Fred pointed out, it eliminates our ability to have owner occupancy requirement. And the, as far as I understand, and we've talked about this a little bit, the intent of the change was to provide more housing of more varieties. And that's great. I think we need to recognize Amherst is probably a different situation as we talked also about than many other places in the state, probably most of them. One example I came across, I couldn't find the data to share with you all. I think we're the only either town or county, I'm not sure which, where the water use reduces in the summer. Rest of the state, I think it increases. And that's just because of our residents, right? Who's here and who's not here in the summer. This is one way that we are clearly extremely different from the rest of this. Um, and it's definitely true around housing, comparing the numbers of short-term residents versus long-term residents. And that's, this law, uh, state law change felt like the right opportunity to try and introduce this definition, to do something about it, this specific change. And it's, again, as I wrote in the beginning of the, the, when I submitted, it's not anti-student, it's pro-permanent resident. So we want there to be more opportunities for long-term, stable households. That's really the point. And because the law took away our ability to stay on occupied. This is one way where we could accomplish a similar. Goal to what we believe the intent of the law change was about. I think the change was not meant to say, okay, Amherst, you can now have more student homes in town. You can have more density with student homes. We don't think that's the purpose. And this feels like a potential way to allow, obviously not go against the state law. But to allow more ADUs to be built. And it will provide more rental opportunities for non-students, which is really what we're talking about. Um, so that kind of sums up the the motivation. Um, and the idea here for the ADU bylaw was to simply state that only one of the two. Dwellings on a property can be a student home. So therefore we need a definition of what that means. And we can go through the details of that, or we can have different discussion first. I don't know how how we want to go with this.
Okay. Um, Bruce, did you want to elaborate on that introduction or are we are are we ready to go to questions?
No elaboration. I can simply say that I support what Jesse has said entirely. I think we. Would be, I think, I think this is appropriate that we should put this forward and see how it goes.
Okay. In terms of how it goes, Nate. There was discussion about some attorney general review of these bylaws, but is that a is that applicable to Amherst or is that? Not the case for us? What would be, what would test the legality of this with respect to the law?
A lawsuit.
Okay.
No, I mean, yeah, so you know, Amherst is no longer, you know, no longer has town meeting. And so town meetings. Submit zoning changes and the review by the state. Um, you know, we don't follow that process anymore with a town council. And so, you know, we'd have our legal counsel review it. Um, and then essentially that's it. And then, you know, if a if right after it's adopted and enacted, then someone could appeal it. Um, to say that it's unreasonable. So, you know, I think that that is the that is the process. They could appeal to the zoning board if there's an issue, if a building commit, you know, so if a. Say we adopted a student home definition. Someone could appeal to the zoning board, the issuance of a building permit, and then they could go further and then appeal it through courts. You know, at the housing subcommittee, this was discussed and. You know, I think, you know, I think the idea, the concern is that. You know, like Jesse said, the the overwhelming demand in the market will change what, who occupies these ADUs. And just kind of change the the housing dynamic. You know, other college towns have it outside of Massachusetts. Staff did look at it and said that there are some pieces of it that are pretty difficult and. To enforce or manage, and there's some language that needs to be modified or removed. And it's something that had been discussed kind of during the rental registration. And I think there is some acknowledgement that it'd be, you know, it could be a definition that works, but it does need. You know, it needs some time and some refinement. And so, and I guess my question is. You know, would the board want to try to spend some time incorporating it into the ADU bylaw now or move? You know, say the draft without it forward. Uh, and then we can, you know, figure out how to proceed. You know, or could there be, you know, we could set up two parallel review by law, draft bylaws to look at, or do we want to have? You know, this incorporated and then have it worked on.
Okay. Thank you. Bruce.
I think that we should use this bylaw as as the vehicle to move towards getting a student home definition. Jesse's explained one way in which Amherst is unique. And it's explained by the high propensity of students. The other is the fact that we have a high propensity, a high uh. Number of students in town, uh, more than, we're outnumbered as a population essentially. We're a unique. Uh, community in that regard, certainly in Massachusetts. And we should have a definition of a student home. It just, we just, if any community in the state should have it, we should. And and clearly. We can't wait for other communities around us to. Take the initiative here. It's going to be up to us. And this bylaw is a very good opportunity, as Jesse has. Mentioned, perhaps not tonight, but previously. Um, now is the time. Now is the time. We should do this. It's appropriate that this town should have a definition of a student home. And this bylaw is the impetus that drives that. So. We should recognize that State College particularly has a a a pretty robust program of identifying. Uh, defining and identifying student homes. It's a, it's it's a practice in that part, in that community. And if we have any problem understanding it ourselves. We should find out how they do it and see why we wouldn't. Learn and and apply a similar lesson. I I I think there's no excuse for backing out of this, saying it's too difficult or it's going to be troublesome or what have you. I think it's time.
Okay. Uh, I have three more hands. Fred, you're next.
There we go. Uh, yeah, I think we can chew gum and walk at the same time. Uh, and we ought to. I think that this ought to be addressed at the same time as the. General uh. Correction to acceler- accessory dwelling unit bylaw, I think. Absolutely should be on the same piece of paper. Absolutely. The housing subcommittee has the one-sentence addition. All written out to the accessory bylaw list. And and then there's a definition that makes sense. Uh, let's go for it.
Okay. Lawrence.
Hey, so I, um, I I, as I prefaced, I knew the last time I. Um, made some comments at the last meeting. I I am new to all of this, relatively new to all of this. So bear with me if I. Ask a foolish question or don't have have um, uh, the full background on some of these things. Um, but but as I was reading through the packet, um, I I was looking around just to see if there were other definitions of student homes. And I noticed one of the things that that popped up in my search. It it looked like it was a working draft that the CRC did to some broader bylaw changes. Um, I'm not sure what the context is. I I just see the draft in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three that had some of the same. Some of the same student home definition language included. Um, and so I'm, I'm wondering if that's where some of this language was drawn from and if so. Sort of how those discussions unfolded in the CRC and and if anything that that happened in those conversations could. Um, uh, illuminate the discussion that. We're gonna have. I don't know if I'm making any.
That's good. Nate, why don't you take first dibs on that? Um, then we can get Jesse to see if he cribbed anything from CRC.
Right. So what you probably saw was when they were looking at the rental registration. Uh, there was a long discussion about how you could, right, have that definition. And so. You know, that was a separate process working with the building commissioner and inspection services. Um, and it was for, and it's a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw. So they were still, you know, you know, they. Right, probably had a similar discussion or considerations as we're having now. And they opted not to, you know, move forward with that. The definition that Jesse proposed, you know, came from. I believe State College and was then modified, but it wasn't, you know, I don't. Perhaps he saw what the. You know, the document you referenced, Lawrence, but I'm not aware if he did. So, you know, I, you know. Whether or not he did, it probably has some of the same language or meaning, um, probably because there's probably just a few limited uh, communities that to have that definition.
Yeah, and I I I in no way am implying that that that's not a good thing, that it's the same definition. I actually think it it is because it shows that there's, there's, there's. Broad consensus on these issues. Um, I was really just wondering, you know, if that CRC discussion and their decision not to include that. Um, uh, if there's any, any, um, uh. You know, relevant information to our discussion here about why they elected not to, um, not to move forward with adopting a student home definition.
Yeah, I think, you know, just that it could be difficult to. Determine and monitor and possibly enforce. Uh, but.
Yeah, I mean, it occurred to me that way, if somebody wants to build an ADU and they go to the. Inspection services to uh. Get a building permit. That this issue will never come up during the building permit. So, you know, there won't be, there there's no sort of physical difference between. A student home and a non-student home in terms of building an ADU. So. So we have a requirement that is more about. Operation. Than it is about. What you can build in town. And so I guess partly I was kind of wondering. A, is that something that's appropriate to have in? The, 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 the planning bylaw. Um, and then B, how would we or how would anybody enforce that? And how is, how does that work? Because right now we don't have that. Sort of infrastructure to. Have that level of. Knowledge about what's going on. Jesse.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna comment on some of that exactly, Doug. Uh, let me back up for a second. Lawrence, uh, I love the saying that a great artist borrows and a really good artist steals. But but no, I didn't steal the language. I did, we did steal that straight from State College, modified it very slightly. And our thinking there was that it's been in place for quite a while, guessing it may have been challenged. Um, and it's still there, but we don't, we don't know the details around.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that context. Sorry. Yeah, I just, it popped up when I, when I Googled it. I just wanted to ask, so.
I was not part of that when it happened, so I don't know why it didn't go forward. What I would add is I raised, I brought this to. Planning board, I don't remember how many meetings ago. But the subcommittee, we mostly decided. Without a a use, without a purpose. For the definition. It was very unlikely to move forward. Um, we were, we were pretty concerned about. Assumptions about how it would be used if it were on any bylaw in our town. And I think that's why we backed off a little a couple of months ago in trying to push it forward. We also have discussed the enforcement issue, Doug, that you're bringing up, and we recognize that. At the moment, prob- there might be none. Just like only four unrelated people can live in a house. There's basically no enforcement of that. But should the town reach a place where we have some ability to do it, there will be a mechanism to try and. Make people stick to that rule. Likewise, when there are, if there are problem houses with complaints, repeated complaints and whatnot. It's something that the building commissioner or whatever town officials can lean on to say, hey, there's a problem here. And look, you're also not adhering to our bylaws. So we recognize that's an issue. But I think I also wanted to reframe the conversation slightly because to me, there's, there's a first step, which is if. Planning board, if a majority of us think this is something that should happen. If yes, then we need to spend some effort in the weeds with the definition, enforcement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If the answer is no. I'm not sure we should spend our time debating how it could be enforced and what the actual definition is. I certainly am on the side of thinking, yes, we, we, we should put this in place. And I completely agree with Bruce that. Now is the time, this AD law change is exactly the right moment because there's a real purpose and a real positive. Use for such a definition. In this specific instance, which would only apply to ADUs for the moment. Thanks.
Okay, Bruce.
Uh, Doug, I agree that is, that that this would only become apparent after. It's constructed and yes, it won't be an issue when someone is pulling a permit. But uh, just like a parking management plan is supposed to be submitted here and indeed any management plan. This is akin to a management plan and for the reason Jesse says. It's important because it gives control and. It may be that it's violated by somebody who doesn't uh, uh, doesn't behave in a way that gets attention. And we might not ever know about it, but. It is a, it is a tool. It is a lever. It is a hammer. It is a device which we can use to further the purposes that Jesse has mentioned that are the goals here. So I don't think we should be dissuaded by. The fact that this doesn't show up or won't show up uh, when someone applies for a building permit.
Okay. Karen.
I totally agree with Jesse and Bruce, and I do think that we are going to start getting an onslaught. Of investors who see this as an opportunity to just. Get more rental income by putting an ADU with another four students in it. And if we, uh, you know, and and they might not know that they're going to get into management problems. If we put it in now. Then someone that's looking at it says, okay, but it is. Perhaps going to be difficult for me to have in my student house, an ADU with four other students in it. So. I am very much in favor of using this time to add this, even if we see that. Uh, it's going to be an issue after the building is built. It still gives you the free warning as an investor. That this may be not a good idea.
Okay, um, a couple, one comment and one question. Um, why did you include both graduate students and undergraduates? My impression of the behavioral. Issues is that they are predominantly among, I'm, I'm, I'm talking to you, Jesse. Mostly, mostly about undergrads and. I mean, you could have a a a middle-aged couple that decides, oh, we're both gonna go get a PhD and we've been living in our ADU for twenty years. Now they're, they're, now they're not in compliance.
Completely agree because the reason is because this is not trying to solve a behavioral problem. It's trying to increase. Long-term residents. And yes, the example you just raised, the people who live here who go back to school, sure, that. Would would suddenly they'd be out of compliance. I think that's the vast minority. And I I don't know how we would deal with that, but I don't think that's a real problem.
Okay. And then the other question.
Point is, and I would like to always come back to this. The point of this is not to try and fix behavior. The point is to increase permanent residence. Period.
Okay. Um, the other thing, I guess the comment I had, the only sort of downside or one downside that it occurred to me was. If you have a, if you had a fixed number of, a set, some number of. Students that want to live in town in rental housing. This would tend to spread them out. Because they can no longer, you know.
Well, it, it would. It would not allow more density in neighborhoods.
Right.
It wouldn't spread them out more than they are now. It just wouldn't allow increasing density to single-family house neighborhoods.
Right. Okay, um, all right. So why don't we have, let's see. I think I'm gonna. Have uh, just a moment for some public comment about this. So, uh, members of the public, if you want to make a comment. Time is seven forty, just for reference. I see so far two hands. Pam. Why don't you bring over Janet McGowan?
Can I make a comment to Mr. Marshall first? I just, I just want to say that the, um, Amherst High School project also has to go to Concom tonight. I'm not exactly sure what.
Really?
Yes, I'm not exactly sure what time that needs to happen. Um, but just for us to be able to be mindful about that. Thank you.
Okay, I was unaware of that. All right, so bring over Janet McGowan. Why don't we limit public comment for this moment to two minutes, not three, two minutes? Hello, Janet, give us your name and your street address. You have two minutes.
I'm Janet McGowan. I live at seven oh six Southeast Street. Um, I was gonna just make two quick comments other than the fact that I support this and I'm glad to see it moving forward. Um, first of is that you, um, the reason it's a, it says students is that students are not a protected class under state or federal law. But age is. And so if you, if this said graduate students are okay. There would be a possible interpretation that that was discrimination against younger people. The undergrads were usually young. there would be a possible interpretation that that was discrimination against younger people, the undergrads were usually younger. Um, and the other thing is to keep in mind is that no rule or law will fit every circumstance perfectly. There's always something where it's, like the one you cited Doug, where it's just not, it doesn't feel right. But when your goal is to get, to fix a problem or to forward a goal and catch as many as you can and do it as well as you can, but you can't say in every possible circumstance in any rule or law, it's always gonna feel like just or fair. So, that was all I was gonna say, but I'm glad to see the board addressing, you know, issues that have been brought to us again and again by permanent residents and people and, um, people who are in neighborhoods with just a lot of students and struggling with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, let's bring over Pam Rooney. Pam, you'll have two minutes. If you give us your name and your street address.
Hi, Pam Rooney, uh, 42 Cottage Street, thanks for letting me in. Uh, I'm very heartened by this approach to having a pro-permanent resident focus. I am, I am in fact delighted. Um, a couple of things went through my head. If it's not specifically written in the state law, since I haven't seen the town staff draft, if not specifically written in the state law, can we retain our occupancy limit of three, three people? Cause that is the cap right now in an ADU. If you think of any ADU being um, at half of the size of a, of a regular single family, it's a much smaller space, and the limit of three occupants seems very reasonable. Um, I missed the conversation about was there an, a management plan required? And a parking plan required? I would, I would strongly urge us to keep both of those aspects. And in, and especially, um, as the town staff and inspections are developing their rental registration program to be able to use that as a basis for tracking, uh, occupancy, or, um, not occupancy, um, occupation of residents, because I think that is something that is requested of, um, in these leases. Thank you. I'm very happy to hear this conversation.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, given the, uh, perhaps schedule issue that the other hearing has, I think what I'd like to do is just have a a vote from the board about, um, about this, about this general idea. Um, you know, I, I was in a conversation with Nate, uh, and Rob Mora, and earlier this week, and it was clear he had some concerns about the way it was worded. So, uh, I think, I'm not viewing this as ready for primetime to refer to Town Council, but uh, you know, if, if a majority of the board wants us to go this direction, then we should basically refer it to Nate to work with Rob and try to words, you know, wordsmith it or think about the process or whatever, uh, and bring it back to us. Uh, and that's really what I wanted, would like to vote on tonight. Um, I see, you know, Johanna and then Jesse.
Thanks, um. I think I disagree with kind of the whole premise here, and I'm not really in support of this approach, like to kind of, I don't know, uh, make like permanent residents in town like, uh, somehow more valuable than other people who live in town. Like, we are a college town, and I'm worried that this approach could prompt legal challenges. I think it distracts from other important things that we know are in our lane. I think it has the potential to add really cumbersome kind of red tape and more regulations, and to me, it just kind of like screams nanny state government at its worst. Um, so I am not particularly excited about continuing to explore down this line of thinking.
All right, um, Nate, um, kind of on, I guess that prompts a question that I would have, which is, what do we know about the strength of the rental market other than students? Is this gonna actually discourage people from doing ADUs because they don't think they can rent the other unit? Uh, do we know anything?
Well, we have the Housing Needs Assessment that's taking place now, I mean, I think, I mean, I think a few things, I think, you know, with the building costs and interest rates, you know, an ADU is uh, an investment for most probably single-family homeowners. Uh, you know, it's, it's not like a $20,000 thing, um. You know, and even if it's with, contained within an existing dwelling, you know, all the code requirements and other thing, you know, it, it is definitely a process. Um, you know, I guess I'm saying that, and it makes me think that an investor-owned property might have the ability or collateral to, you know, put on an ADU because they can recoup costs differently. Um, I do think there is a rental market or, or ownership market in Amherst for, you know, for all types of units from different types of households. Um, you know, I, I think the, the thought is that an accessory dwelling unit is probably considered a lowercase a affordable unit, typically deed restricted, or restricted to a certain amount of income. It's just that by their nature and their size, uh, that, you know, they would be, you know, rented or purchased for less than a single-family dwelling. I think that right now the market in Amherst has such demand for housing that the cost, you know, whether it's for any, any type of, you know, occupancy will be pretty high. So I think there will be demand, I do think though the student market, you know, really drives the Amherst housing market, so, um, you know, I think, you know, if, if there's an owner-occupied unit and they, you know, even today, if they wanna build a single, you know, an accessory dwelling unit, we allow that. So, you know, I don't, you know, in the last few years since we changed our bylaw, there has been a number of accessory dwelling units. You know, I think, um, with the state change, maybe people will know about it more, but it, I, I think that there could be some people who apply for non-owner-occupied duplexes who, you know, through the zoning board now, instead of being, you know, a special permit, it's a buy right um, process, and so I think it, it changes that a little bit. Um, but I do think there's demand for, you know, students and non-students to use them, I do think however the, if most of these are built, I think the majority, if they're rented, will be to, to students, just given the nature of the housing market.
Okay, Jesse?
Uh, given that the definition might work, I think I'd still like to move to include that addition to the bylaw. Like, we don't have to have the final definition to have that one sentence included in the ADU bylaw. Unless, unless I'm mistaken.
Uh, what, sorry, what, um?
Yeah, we, we could, I would like to move that we include the one-sentence addition, even though the, the definition of student home might need work. I would, I'm moving that we, Planning Board vote on including that one-sentence addition about only one of the dwellings.
Okay. Is there a second? Bruce, you're the next hand.
Yes, I, I'll second that, but I would also s- suggested that if you wanted to conduct it your way Doug, I'd be happy with that too, which is basically a straw poll that takes it on to
Well, we now have a motion, so never mind about the straw.
Okay, it's a seconded motion.
Okay. Okay, um, I guess, uh, I'll just say before we vote that I, I, this seems like a sort of major step in terms of the way we're thinking about zoning ha- occupancy in Amherst, and so I'm, I'm a little bit, uh, hesitant to jump to that conclusion immediately, so, uh, at the moment, I'm not sure I'm ready to do that, so I'm likely to oppose this, not forever, but at least for a while. Um, so, uh, I'd rather just move Nate's draft as he has drafted it on so that that can get implemented at this time, and that later we would think more about this and talk with Rob Mora and probably CRC, and, um, so anyway, that's, that's my preference, so I'm gonna vote against it, but I'm not, you know, I'm not forever against it. All right, so, uh, well, we have a motion, we have a second. Lawrence, you can speak.
Yeah, I, I just, I, and I don't know what the parliamentary rules are here, but can I make a motion to the motion?
You could offer a friendly amendment.
My recommendation would be to offer a friendly amendment for consideration that we, um, uh, continue the vote on this motion to the next meeting.
Oh, so you wanna just table this? And talk about it in the next meeting?
I, I, the, the, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with Jesse's perspective that, that we should have a vote on this, this one sentence being included in the ADU bylaw, but I feel like hearing that, that there are other perspectives and other things to consider here, I, I, I don't feel fully prepared personally to, to take a vote right now. Um, and so my friendly amendment would be, and again, I don't know how this works from parliamentary perspective, but if we could instead take the, the, um, uh, the vote on, on Jesse's motion, um, at the next meeting, uh, I would appreciate that.
All right, so, I don't know what the parliamentary term is, Nate, are we, would that be to table or to suspend, or uh, having moved and seconded, we need to go forward with a vote and tonight anyway?
Yeah, I think we can go forward with a vote, I don't, I mean, to me, this is a, you know, this is the Planning Board encouraging staff to, you know, work on this, I don't, I don't see that as a, um, a big deal, I mean, I, during the conversation, I was already marking up the definition of a student home anyways to share, so I'm not, no.
Yeah, can I, can I clarify what, what Jesse's motion was? Cause I understood it as a motion to include the one-sentence in the revised ADU bylaw
In the draft
pulled together, into the draft.
Draft, yeah.
Right, rather than, uh, you know, a continued discussion of what the definition should look like. So, so it seems to me that we're taking a vote about whether we collectively as the Planning Board think that folks shouldn't, or should not be able to rent both a house and an ADU to students.
Yeah, but this, and this is a vote to add it to the draft, and the draft at the moment is not headed, you know, it's not going anywhere automatically, but it's being worked on by staff, so essentially, we're directing Nate and the staff to include this provision in their working draft as they continue to work on it. Okay, uh, Jesse?
Last comment, just to clarify also, yeah, so if staff works on it and they realize there's some critical problem with this, it's just a draft, so it could then be taken out, right?
Okay.
Just to process clear, is that correct? And even so, the draft would then go to Town Council, which would probably come back to us and CRC, right? So it goes round and round again, so.
Right, I think we're gonna see the draft more before it goes to Town Council. All right, all right, so why don't we go ahead and vote? Um, we'll, we'll go ahead in alphabetical order as usual, it's starting with you Bruce.
I am an I.
All right, Fred?
I am an I.
Lawrence?
Uh, I'm a no.
All right. Uh, Jesse?
I?
Uh, Johanna?
No.
Okay, Karen?
I.
Okay, and I'm a no as well, that's four in favor, three opposed. The motion carries. Um, Nate, we'd like you to work on this. So, there we go. All right, so, time is nine, ten, seven fifty-six. Um, customarily, we'll take a five-minute break at this time. Uh, it seems like that would be a smart thing to do so we can get into the uh, high school conversation. And, um, so when we, why don't we take four minutes and come back at eight o'clock? And, uh, at eight o'clock, Pam, if you could bring over the folks for the high school hearing, then we will jump right into that. All right, when you guys, when you're back, please turn on your, your camera so that we know you're back. All right, we have Fred, we have Karen, Johanna. Everybody but Nate. Okay, Pam, so once you get settled, uh, if you can start to pull over the folks from, for the high school. Okay, time is eight o'clock. And I think I'll go ahead and launch into the intro for this, even though Nate is not back.
Bob, is there other people joining you or are you our applicant?
Uh, yes, if you could Pam, if you could bring in Mark Aragoni.
Okay.
From SLR and Mike Gagnon, Mike may have to jump out because he's the lead on the conservation commission meeting, but definitely Mark and Mike if he's available. M. Gagnon and M. Aragoni.
Yeah, I see they're both listed with SLR. Okay. All right, so time is eight oh one. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been, has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding SPR twenty twenty-five dash zero six Amherst Regional, Amherst Pelham Regional High School, twenty-one and thirty Mattoon Street. Under section three point three three zero of the zoning bylaw, request site plan review approval to remove existing track and field, construct a new track and field facility with the site improvements, including replacement of field lighting and ADA upgrades located at map eleven D parcel eighty-one and two fifteen and eleven D two seven zero in the RG zoning district. Are there any board member disclosures? Bruce?
I will be recusing myself as a, an abater.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're ready for the.
Actually Doug, uh, I, I will just turn it off and I can listen, I suppose. So I know when the, uh, when you resume on the following thing, but otherwise I'll be turned off.
Okay. All right, um, Bob, are you leading the presentation for the applicants?
Uh, yes, I am. I will start off and give a little update on where we stand with the project right now. And then I'll turn things over to Mark to provide a description of the project and, and really serve as our technical representatives. As you know, I work for the town of Amherst on the town's, uh, special capital project coordinator. This is a project town asked me to get involved in about a year and a half ago, uh, representing both the town and the school district. Um, obviously it's a school district project, but the town has a major financial investment in this project. And it's a major benefit to the town as well as the school districts. So, and given the, um, transitions that have occurred, um, at the school district over the last year or two, the thought was that the town would be in a better position to help lead this project forward uh, with the support of the school district than having the school district take the lead itself. Project status where we are, as you may know, we did meet with the DAAC. We received a positive recommendation with no comments, no recommendations for any modifications from the DAAC. We did meet with the DRB. Similarly, we received a positive recommendation with no requested modifications or, or comments on the plan that was proposed, uh, to the DRB. And as you've heard, we are meeting, it'll actually be the third time with the conservation commission tonight. Unfortunately, our second meeting, uh, couldn't be held as a public meeting because they lacked a quorum that evening. Although we did receive a written comment from one commission member, uh, that we're responding to this evening. So we're, we're hopeful that we will make it through the conservation commission process, uh, tonight since, um, the commission has heard it. In, in full one time and has commented on the project, uh, or members of the commission have commented, uh, twice now. We've been responsive to both of those comments. And that meeting we were thinking is coming up about eight thirty tonight, but we'll see. We don't know exactly what their timetable is going to be. Um, from a funding standpoint, it's not really planning a board item, but just want to let you know that all the pieces of this project are coming together. Um, the town of Pelham has appropriated the requested CPA money. The town of Chutesbury last night at town meeting appropriated the requested CPA money. And we have, uh, two steps left to complete. We're meeting with the finance committee, Amherst Finance Committee next Tuesday, uh, to hopefully receive their recommendation for additional CPA funding to be put forward by the town of Amherst. And then ultimately there'll be the town of Leverett, um, unfortunately because of their town meeting schedule, we likely will not be heard until the springtime, um, from the town of Leverett. But we've got, uh, you know, out of the five entities, we're optimistic that we'll have four of them on board in the very near future. You may have heard some discussion of the project and the use of alternates in the project design. Uh, we are seeking approval of the entire project as you see presented on the project plans today. We have two moving pieces really. We don't yet know what the construction bid cost will be. We don't know for certain what the financing availability is going to be on this project. And as I mentioned, the town of Leverett, um, decision may not be known for a number of months. So we have put a plan in place where we believe that we have a project design that can be built within the funding that has been secured. Um, and possibly defer making some decisions on some components of that project until a later date, either during this construction cycle or possibly as a future phase. But we are seeking approval of the entire project, uh, this evening, as you see on the plan. We are gearing up and we are hoping to be able to release this project for bidding at the beginning of January. We really, to, to do this type of project, we have one opportunity every year to do it, basically is after school um, is done, uh, during the, the, the summer construction period. So in order to put those pieces together, we need to get the project out to bid, we need to get it moving, we need to have everything in order. So that as soon as the high school shuts down and the students get off the field, we're ready to go to construction. And we're hoping to move the permitting process along to support that. Um, if we can't do that, it ultimately, it kicks us to, to the, the construction season of twenty twenty-six. And we really don't want that to happen. We really want this to happen during the season of twenty twenty-five. You will see there were a number of questions asked by planning department staff. We've responded all of those. Some of them we responded in a manner that may not fully satisfy all the planning board questions and concerns. I understand that. There are a couple of items that relate to school district operational questions and issues, and some of those are actually part of an ongoing discussion between the town of Amherst and the school district. And we expect that there'll be a memorandum of understanding executed between this town and the district that will better sort through maintenance responsibilities and obligations and things like that. Uh, that will be in place before this project is put in service, um, in the late summer, early fall of twenty twenty-five. But those agreements aren't yet fully worked out, but they will have to be in place, um, before, again, before things, um, get used. And there may be some conditions that the planning board puts on this project as a result of that. Uh, let's see. If it's all possible, we'd, we'd love to see an approval this evening, even if it's a conditioned approval. Um, we want to make certain that we can put any requirements that the planning board uh, puts on this project that would apply to a contractor into the bidding documents. So the contractors bidding on this project fully understand what the requirements of them will be. Um, and so getting through that approval process, at least having a, a draft, uh, decision. Understand that the decision doesn't get signed, um, until the end of the appeal period, but at least having a draft decision that we can insert into the bidding documents is very important. And then the last element I wanted to mention, I understand you have not received comments from the town engineer, from Jason Skeels as of yet. I did speak to Jason this afternoon and he asked me to pass on, um, the following information to the planning board. Um, he is very busy, so he hasn't been able to put this in writing, but he did indicate that he's been involved in this. And he authorized me to, to, to speak these words on his behalf, that, um, he's been involved with this project from the very beginning. Uh, he's very aware of it and that he has no concerns with what has been put forward by, um, and by, by the town and by the school district, um, and, and the documents that have been put together from SL, by SLR. So with that, I think I've said enough and I will turn things over to Mark to get into the, some of the more interesting aspects of the project.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. Um, if I could, I'm going to share my screen. Um, I plan to walk you through, um, the primary elements of the plan. Then I will show you a rendering that sort of brings everything back sort of in a little bit more into perspective on what's actually proposed and what we plan on this facility looking like. Um, and then obviously I'll be available, um, for questions. I'm a licensed landscape architect in Massachusetts and senior principal of SLR. I'm joined by Mike Gagnon, who is a professional engineer. He may have to jump off, as Bob said, um, to jump and, and continue on bringing through the project through the, um, conservation commission. So, um, hopefully I'll do a good enough job. But if we do have some questions and I can't answer them and Mike has to jump off, um, we will definitely get back to you with any, any unanswered questions that you may have. But with that being said, I'm assuming and hoping that everybody can see a black and white plan that looks like a survey drawing.
Yes, indeed.
Perfect. Um, I figured I'd just start here. Um, I'm sure everyone is aware um, of the orientation and the condition of the actual field and track that's out there today. Um, this is an existing condition survey. Um, again, I'm referring to the package of design plans that have been submitted on behalf of this project. Um, so what you're looking at here is just a topographic survey. Um, we did go through a pretty extensive alternatives analysis on where exactly to build this field, what orientation the track and field should go into. The next plan that I'm just going to show is basically, um, the project sits now as an existing east-west or west-east orientation. Um, the proposed project takes the track and field and turns it on a north-south axis, which is preferable for many reasons. Um, what you're looking at here is just an exist, uh, removals plan. So basically the plan is to remove everything having to do with the existing track um, and field that exists out there today. So that includes the track, that includes the lighting, um, that includes any of the jumping and field events. All that will be removed as part of this project in favor of a reoriented field and new track, um, which is shown on this plan here. So a few of the highlights of this project, um, the existing track, what was a six lane track. Um, the new track will be an eight lane, um, competition track. Synthetic surface. The actual new field inside of the proposed new track will be a natural grass field with full irrigation, um, completely reconstructed and then sodded. Um, so this will not be a seeded field. The reason for that is we want to have a quick turnover. Um, so once the drainage layer, um, and growing media is replaced in the field, the field will be sodded. And then after a couple of weeks, that field is going to be ready to be played on. Um, what's shown off to the west in a rectangular, um, field location, in order to construct the track and redo, um, a competition level natural grass field, we're going to have to excavate the material, um, that sits within this area in order to construct the track and rebuild the natural grass field, we're going to use that material, um, to actually regrade and create a, a nicer, more usable. Um, we'll call it a recreational level rectangular athletic field, just to the west of the new, we'll call it the stadium field. Um, to the west, what's also shown in these, um, contour, um, amoebic shapes, kidney shapes in these areas are the engineering and stormwater control of the site is completely designed and engineered. Um, and there will be a ten percent reduction in peak flow coming off of the site. Um, so Mike Gagnon is on the call. This has been fully designed and I'm sure as you can imagine, um, has had quite a few questions back and forth through your conservation commission. As Bob mentioned, we're in our third meeting over there. Um, and we have been answering questions and making revisions as necessary. And we're very comfortable with where we stand on this project, um, to date. I'm going to switch from the black and white drawings and I'm just going to pull up a rendering. Are you looking at a rendering right now?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, I think it makes it a little bit easier to sort of understand exactly the extent of the, of the, um, actual project. So some things that will be done, um, on the outside of the actual synthetic turf track are we will be reconstructing a shot put. Here's the reconstructed, um, rectangular athletic field. And then what's just shown in striping is the javelin and the throwing events will just be striped on the natural grass. We are making sure and we have been requested to just make sure we could in future construct a softball field that will not be constructed as part of this project. But then dimensionally, we can construct that infield and not impact that proposed recreational field. And then we will be having a, a discus, new discus circle fencing, um, and concrete area here that will be part of this project. Um, what's highlighted as number two in this area right here, this rectangular area, that's proposed to be a concrete pad for a future bleacher system. The bleachers will not be installed as part of this project. Um, and then what's shown here is the actual, um, runway, um, for the pole vault, which will be outside of the actual track area. Um, what's shown number four will be that synthetic turf track surface that will be where the high jump will be. Um, what's shown up in number twelve and we're calling it the northern D zone. Um, that's where the long jump, triple jump, um, events will be held. And then as you can see, there are two areas for straightaway sprinting events. The, um, facility will be fenced in with a four foot high, um, galvan, uh, chain link fence. And it will have, um, accessibility, um, from Mattoon Street. And it will also have accessibility, um, from the school parking lot, which is shown as number thirteen up here. That will be a universally accessible walkway around four percent, obviously not to exceed five percent. That'll be graded at about four percent. The existing field today is lit by a six pole lighting system. The, those will be removed in favor of only a four pole LED lighting system. Those poles will be eighty feet tall, um, but we're will be going from a six pole lighting system to an, a much more efficient um, LED four pole lighting system. A lot of the benefits with the LED system are they're much more efficient. Um, they're cheaper to operate and some other things are they turn right off, on and off with a switch. Um, they're dimmable and you can change the actual light output from a competition level to a more recreational level or to a more safety, um, just getting people in and out of the stadium level. So a lot of benefits, um, go, um, into that. The existing staircase access, um, will be maintained, which is highlighted at seventeen. Um, the parking in the school parking lot label is number sixteen. That's adjacent to the field at the top of the hill. That will be restripped in favor of two additional, um, handicap parking spaces that will be striped. Um, and then the existing walkway will be removed along Mattoon Street in favor of a, a new ten foot wide walkway, um, and curb along Mattoon Street, um, to provide, um, better access to and from the field with a, with another, um, universal access drop curb system that will add access into the field off of Mattoon Street in this area. Okay, let me take a breath, make sure that I went through, um, the majority of the stuff. Bob, if you feel like I missed anything.
Certainly, I'll, I'll just note that there's been a couple of enhancements beyond what you see in this rendering. This rendering is a little bit an earlier version of the layout. One that comes to mind where Mark was mentioning the accessible path coming off of Mattoon Street. The design plans that were submitted, uh, to the planning board show a wider pathway there because that'll be the ambulance entrance into the field area. So it's critical to have a, a wide enough paved pathway and gate such that an ambulance can get onto the field. So I think the rendering does a great job of showing the big picture. There are some minor differences between the rendering and, and the detailed plans.
Okay, uh, Mark, anything else?
Um, no, I think it's a good time to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Board members. Question time, Jesse.
Thanks, thanks for the presentation. Um, question about the multi-use field to the south, is it, I guess? Is that surface actually different than this surrounding grass? And is there any barrier or it's just shaded for the illustration here?
Um, are we, uh, let's see, it would be the west. Um, what's labeled as number six or the field outside of the stadium field? That will be, that will be seeded. That will not be sodded.
And so eventually it'll end up as, I mean, and there's no fence or anything, there's no border restricting, really, right? Besides the discuss area.
Correct.
Okay.
It will be regraded, the soil will be enhanced and then it'll be seeded. So it'll be a, a better quality field than currently exists there, but it won't be at the level that the, uh, field inside the track will be.
Is, is the, is that area going to be raised significantly above its current height?
The answer to that is no, not significantly. Um, you can see here, we're looking at, uh, there are some grades on this plan. So existing grade is around two ninety. So existing grade is around 290. And the proposed grade is roughly going to be around the same 290, potentially a little bit higher. Maybe six inches to a foot in the middle, but basically, we're going to be pretty close to the existing grade.
All right, so it's not going to look like a raised rectangular area?
No.
Okay. But you're using, you are using the spoils from the construction next to it.
Correct, correct.
And are there any hazardous materials in the soil that are having to be buried or somehow managed?
No, there isn't. We have done actually multiple rounds of soil testing. First, where some, some, you know, relatively shallow test digs that were done, and we tested for a whole range of soil parameters, and then we also excavated test pits and inspected the soil at that point. We have not found anything that is a concern.
All right. Is the history of this site, was it originally wetland, and it was filled in when the high school was built?
That is the story that I've heard Dave Zomek tell stories of, of his dad working on this property when he was a kid and having some photographs of what it used to look like. So I, I believe you are correct, yes.
Okay. All right, but you don't have any concerns about the stability of the soil? You're probably augmenting it with whatever you need to create the right base for all the track and field activities and, and to make sure the ambulance doesn't get stuck in a rut or something like that?
Right. We found, you know, the good news was we didn't find any buried organic material or anything like that in all of the test pourings and test pits that were done. You know, fields like this sometimes are notorious of being former stump dumps or things like that, and we found no indication that there was anything but clean fill that was used to, to fill this area.
Okay, great. I'm not seeing any other hands at the moment. So Nate, I'm going to ask you. You prepared the development application report. Oh, I see now, I see Nate and then Fred. All right. So Nate.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you want me to walk through the development application report, I can. I was just going to say that, you know, a 1930s aerial photograph shows that this is, you know, farmland with some drainage ditches. It wasn't as if it was like a wooded swamp, and then the high school was built. You know, it had been like managed land. And, you know, you know, looked fairly dry. I mean, so it could have been seasonally wet, but it wasn't as if there was, you know, feet of water on here, and it was a pond, and then somehow there was a high school built. It could have just been seasonally wet. But it, you know, had been managed since the early 20th century for, for use. So.
Okay. Well, then let's hear from Fred, and we'll come back to the development application report. Fred.
Yeah. I'm, uh, could you just take a minute to walk through how traffic is going to move to the north and northwest of here as opposed to the way it moves now? I, I'm not, I see the high school parking lot, which looks a lot, you know, looks smaller than the way I remember it right now. And I, and then, of course, at the north west corner of the parking lot, there's a, a roadway that goes past the end of Memorial Pool and out to Triangle Street. Now, I'm just not clear in my mind how that traffic movement's going to take place with this accomplished.
That's easy to respond to. There are no proposed modifications to what currently exists. The the alignment of Mattoon Street is proposed to be exactly what it is now. The only modification we're proposing is off the edge of the roadway to expand the sidewalk to a 10-foot-wide walk. And then on the parking lot, we are proposing to retain the existing curb line, make some relatively minor improvements to the parking lot to create the ADA spaces in the parking lot. And, and that's it. Nothing else moves, nothing else changes.
Yeah, so the parking lot that you're showing is the one that's on the west side of the, of the high school. It's not the primary parking lot that is sort of southeast of the high school. So Fred, I'm not sure whether you're thinking of the larger main parking lot, but this is not that parking lot. And.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, I did put the aerial up on the, on the screen, just.
And Mark, maybe you could just put your cursor on the parking lot that you're showing, been showing on your drawings. It's this, it's that one there on the west side. So there really isn't any traffic, vehicular traffic change at all.
Mark, can you roughly sketch on the reorientation to get a sense of what we're talking about here? I don't know if you have the sketch ability there or not.
Let's see how good.
And Fred, the, the pool is at the bottom of the page across Mattoon Street.
So. Is that a major change?
Highly technical.
I'm glad he's the landscaper.
I'm embarrassed.
Fred, are you there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here and I'm still confused. Uh, there's a okay. Oh, I see. Okay, now I, now, this was very helpful. Now I
So I believe you live toward the right-hand side of this screen.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, my, my four kids all walk to this high school. And yeah, I, and I.
Well, I just want you to, I just want to make sure you're clear, and we don't have, you know.
Yeah, that, that street that I, okay, so this is.
That's Mattoon Street where he's got the cursor now.
Yeah, now, now I, I I was mentally placing this on the opposite side of that, you know, south of that roadway that is not being moved. No, what this is, this is, this is all taking place north of that, that roadway. Now, now I get it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay. Then why don't we go back to Nate and Nate, is there, you know, you, you put together the development application report. And as you, as you wrote it, it looked like there were a few issues that you wanted to highlight for us. And there was some suggestion that maybe we hold off on approving this until we hear from the conservation commission. So why don't you go through what you've written here?
Sure, I, I won't take credit for it. A new planner, Walker, had, had worked on this with, you know, that input from staff, so. Yeah, there are a few things that may, you know, that I think could be addressed. You know, I'll say one, the sign. So the scoreboard is considered an oversized sign. But after speaking with the building commissioner, the, the zoning bylaw allows the permit granting authority to waive any part of the signed bylaw. So it doesn't need a special permit. It would just need a finding that the scoreboard, you know, for safety, site design, aesthetic, or convenience is, is permissible and acceptable, and so we can waive that, that, that size requirement. In the development application report, it was mentioned about the lighting and the finish on the poles. And, you know, I spoke with Bob, and so they're going to go with something that is more durable and you know, is, is what's recommended, and so you know, I, it you know, so I don't, I'm not recommending that there be a painting or anything on it. I would, I would recommend whatever is most durable and requires the least maintenance, but it was just something that was noted. Let's see. You know, I think they did complete a management plan, and as Bob mentioned, you know, there's a will need to be a partnership with the town and the regional school district in terms of some of the operations and maintenance. And so there are some details there that will be, would be worked out. And they're requesting waivers from traffic. There's no change in parking or traffic anticipated. And then, you know, fire didn't have any message, you know, any comments other than that, the double gates provide access for ambulance and emergency vehicles. And the designer review board and the DAC supported it as designed. And in terms of the conservation commission review, you know, I think that they're addressing all the issues related to that, and so I think the board could have a condition that says, you know, any changes as a result of the conservation commission review would be brought back to the planning board, although we have a standard condition that basically says that anyways. That says, you know, any changes have to be brought back to determine if they're de minimis or need a public hearing, and so you know, if the board is comfortable with that, then we can move forward with, you know, that, or we would, you know, continue the hearing to determine if the conservation commission review would have any site changes. So I spoke with the town's wetland administrator today. And she didn't anticipate any, you know, any changes that would change the site plan. So even if the conservation commission may have had some suggestions, it wouldn't necessarily change what we're seeing here on the screen in terms of the planning board review. So you know, I don't think there was a lot in terms of questions. I think outside the development application report, there were questions, as Bob mentioned, that staff asked that were then addressed. And so, you know, for instance, there's no additional storage shed being proposed. You know, no permanent bleachers or concession building or things like that. And so, you know, if in the future the school wants to put in a concession building or a structure, then to me, that would just, you know, would have to go through the site plan or view process again. And so, you know, at that point, it would, you know, be a amended site plan or a new site plan. So I think, you know, what we see here is what we would review. And, you know, I don't think we need to try to write conditions supposing what could happen in the future. And so, you know, it's a pretty straightforward project in that respect.
Okay. So the only finding you've mentioned is the, the, the waiver of the signed bylaw. You know, usually Chris would use to sort of draft findings and conditions for us. Is that something you're prepared to offer, or is that something we should cobble together tonight?
No, I, I do have a Word document actually available I can share, if we're, if we're there. We could, you know.
Well, then why don't, why don't I make one more call for board comments, and then I will make a call for public comment before we get to that. Still not seeing any hands from board members. Members of the public, are there any members who would like to make a comment at this point? Pam, can you bring over Pam Rooney?
Hi Pam. Good evening, Pam Rooney, 42 Cottage Street. I, in a wonderful layout, wonderful plan, what I have missed hearing tonight is any discussion or acknowledgement of Tanbrook piping that runs now under the new orientation of the track. And I was, I've heard, I learned that the pipe is currently in good condition. That with, but, but current, but current layout did not necessarily have heavy construction work on top of it. It looks like it skirts the main area of the track, a little bit underneath it. Are there any, are there any statements in your specifications or or any conditions that acknowledge that pipe and direct the contractor to protect, essentially to protect at all cost? I think we would find it very hard to go after the contractor once the project is underway and complete, if something does in fact go wrong with the, with the piping. The other, the other thing that I'm missing on this very, very small scale drawing on the screen is I'm not seeing any drains in either of the two sort of kidney-shaped depressions, catch basins that would indicate to me that any moisture, any rainfall collecting there is being piped out, and maybe I, maybe it wasn't a big enough screen to see it. So I think my question has been answered that yes, there is a drain from each of these catch basin, catch areas. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That is.
Good, thank you.
And Mark, or, or Bob, could you address the question about Tanbrook and it's?
Yes, I can, and I, it'll be similar. The question had come up at the town council referral meeting the other night. It's a very good question, very good point that we want to make certain that the, the existing culvert is protected. It is, as, as Ms. Rooney indicated, we inspected it with the assistance of the DPW before we started any design work on this project to one, verify its condition, to see whether or not any improvements or modifications would have to be made, and we found it to be in very good shape. We have discussed it based on the meeting the other night that we would do a post-construction TV inspection as well, while the contractor is still under contract to make certain that if there were any problems, that those problems are identified and fixed, while we still have a contractor on board under contract with retainage, with, with insurance and other types of things. We will also, we're in the, we're really in the beginning process right now of writing the technical specifications for this project. You know, you'll, you, you see the plans here. There'll be hundreds of pages of documents that become part of the bid documents that ultimately go out at the beginning of January, hopefully, and we'll make certain that we incorporate restrictions in terms of what can happen on top of that pipe and make certain that the contractor is aware that they need to protect it throughout construction. So very good point, and we'll make certain in the specifications that it gets addressed.
Okay. I don't see any other hands raised from the public. So we'll come back, and Fred, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I I think it would be helpful on some of these plans to actually show the location of the Tanbrook Culvert. I, I agree with Pam Rooney. This is, this is critical and yeah, we, we have, we have to keep this very much in view.
Okay, and Mark, I see some lines that might be Tanbrook.
Yes, the, the.
Appreciate that.
Sure, as, as Bob mentioned, the Tanbrook Culvert was an extreme part of the design. It will continue to be a part of the specifications, protection of it, monitoring of it through construction, and then making sure that it's exactly how it was when we're, when the contractor's done, as it was the day he started. It is located on all of our plans. I can highlight it.
And I'm seeing a, a sort of dashed line that.
Yeah, it runs right here. Bangs a corner right here. And then runs out.
Gone off the screen.
Yeah, there we go. Let's scroll down a little bit, and then you'll be able to see it, hopefully. Let's try that again. How about we try red? So that Tanbrook Culvert, we'll go this way, runs here. Here. And then it runs straight up here where it connects into the daylight portion of Tanbrook. So this is where that culvert exists. As Bob mentioned, we camera inspected it. We didn't really know what the condition was going to be. Um, we didn't really know what the condition was going to be. We found it to be in a very good condition. We will put specifications together that call for protection of it. And then, as Bob mentioned, we will be doing a post-construction um inspection to make sure that it's in the same condition as it was um when we started. I guess the main point is we're paying very close attention to it. It's a big part of this project.
And and I assume, I mean, it's, am I correct that your, the life expectancy of that culvert without damage from construction exceeds the life expectancy of the track you are installing?
Correct. A concrete culvert can easily last fifty to one hundred years, if not more, uh depending on conditions.
Do you know when it was installed? I presume it was like nineteen sixty when the high school was built or something like that.
I believe so, yes.
Um, okay, so we're sixty years into that.
Right. And it, you know, the the track surface, the the and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, wrong, Mark, the urethane material, the the surfacing itself is typically a twenty twen- twenty-five year design life, um, if that.
Yeah, so the way track surfaces run are they look, they're looked at in seven year intervals.
Okay.
Um, track surfaces should be good for and for twenty-one years until they need to replace. The caveat being every seven years, they need to have a new um color coat put on the top. They don't need to complete, be completely replaced. They just need to have a maintenance coat put on the top of them. If that's done, seven years, seven years, you should get twenty-one years before you have to replace that surface.
Okay.
We did talk with DPW about making provisions for access to the culvert. So wherever the culvert bends, there is one bend right underneath the track. So the way we're dealing with that from a design standpoint is underneath the urethane surface in the track is an asphalt surface. We're bringing the manhole structure, the 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 metal structure up to be flush with that asphalt surface. So in the event there was a reason to have to get into that culvert during a you know, a critical event, it could, you could get there by removing or cutting a small hole in the urethane surface and then patching the urethane surface. DPW has not had a need to get into that culvert really at all in the past twenty years. Uh, but if they did, we want to make certain that they can do so with doing the minimal amount of damage. And then then we'd be able to repair and patch that urethane with no problem after the fact.
Okay. Great. All right, um, not seeing any other hands. Maybe Nate, why don't we go? Um, is there anything else you wanted to say about the development application and report, or should we go right to your findings as drafted? Oh, Johanna.
I just have one quick question. Um, I really appreciate being briefed on this. Thanks so much for the yeah, taking the time and being so thoughtful with it. I remember at one point, point in this very lengthy project development, there was talk about using artificial surfaces for the playing fields. And I'm just trying to remember like when that got changed.
I believe it was within the last year as we were having discussions concurrently with the town council as well as with the school district. And although there were certainly some strong opinions from folks that would have liked to see a synthetic turf field, they recognized that it would be a major obstacle in the permitting process for this project, particularly with the conservation commission permitting. So and and and, you know, there there there's, as I understand it, I haven't been at any of those meetings, but there was a strong outcry, I believe, um, by, you know, some portions of the public uh that were strongly against the use of synthetic turf. Um, it offers some advantages, you know, that we're not going to get into that because that decision's been made at this point. There definitely are advantages to it, but there was a strong opposition by a group of of uh public and the decision was ultimately made by the school district to be able to move forward in a positive manner, get the financial support that was necessary and move forward with a natural turf field.
Thanks so much for taking the time to explain that.
Okay. Nate. Could we see your draft findings and conditions?
Sure. Let's do uh.
I'm going to ask one more question before Nate, before you get into that. Um, the lighting, is the lighting uh likely to annoy any of the neighbors such as the folks on Cottage Street?
So a photometric plan um was also part of the design and application package. Um, part of development of that photometric plan um is to show the foot candle measurements um around the site. And pretty much the entire site um within the property line itself at the property line or into the site, the actual turf field or the track and field property is at a zero um light level, which is good. Um, there is a little bit um of light shed out onto Mattoon Street on the southern end of the the project, which is actually not a bad thing because that's where you have drop off and sidewalk area. Um, but it does not get anywhere um off the site other than just at that one area. And again, the photometric plan is included in the plan set.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, Nate.
Uh, no, that's fine. And then, so in the photometric plan, it shows, you know, like up to fifty or so foot candles on the field. And I'm assuming, you know, as you mentioned, the lights can be adjusted to meet whatever playing conditions are needed or.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and can we, can we make them do like a little dance or change colors when there's like a touchdown or a point sport or something?
They uh, you can do anything for the cost. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, I I know, I I I was talking to someone who was having um another school was working on new LED lights and he's like, it's controlled by my phone. He's like, I can dim them from my phone now. And I'm like, that's pretty amazing, actually.
Yeah, it's similar to how the irrigation systems are going now too. So just to touch it, not to take any, a lot of time, but this this natural grass field on the interior is going to be a completely designed. It's not going to be just tilling up the existing grass. This is going to have a full design drainage layer. Um, it's going to have a full design, um, and amended organic sand layer. This is going to be a very, very nice field, highly draining field. Um, very good irrigation system that you control by your phone if you'd like to, along with the LED lighting system.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, I'll share my screen. The um you know, the, there are two findings, if this is visible for the board.
Yep.
Um, just that it meets the um, you know, relevant criteria of eleven point two four of the zoning bylaw. And then another finding under eight point five modi- modifications and waivers, this is to the sign regulations that, you know, applicable sections of Article A can be waived for the scoreboard for aesthetic, site design and public convenience. Uh, you know, so what they've shown is a scoreboard that um, you know, is a typical scoreboard, but it's much bigger than what we'd allow as a sign. Uh, it's taller, it's wider. Uh, it it faces north, so it faces the field. So there's no, you know, it is uh illuminated LED, you know, lights on the portion of it, but there's no lighting on the back facing south. So from, you know, Triangle Street, what you'd see is just a, you know, a blank um, you know, back of the scoreboard.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any questions about those findings or that, or the scoreboard.
I am not seeing any.
All right. Um, and so for conditions, you know, these are all pretty um standard conditions, you know, the project shall be built substantially in accordance with the plan submitted to the planning board and we can date uh and, you know, um, acknowledge those. The product shall be managed substantially in accordance with the management plan. And we can, you know, good the date. Uh, and this is, you know, condition three can also, you know, um you know, to me, it also incorporates anything that happens with, say, the conservation commission. So substantial changes to the project or substantial changes to any approved site plans shall be submitted to the planning board for its review and approval prior to the work taking place. The purpose of the submittal shall be for the planning board to approve the change and or determine whether the changes are de minimis or significant enough to require modification of the site plan approval. Uh, so that, you know, essentially if they apply for a building permit, they will need to, and there's changes. Uh, you know, it'll come back to the board for some type of review. Uh, this site plan review approval shall expire within two years of the date that it is filed with the town clerk, unless it has been both reported at the registry of deeds and substantial construction or use has commenced within the two-year time period. All work associated with the project shall be completed within twenty-four months from the date of issuance of the building permit. If more time is needed, the applicant shall come before the planning board at a public meeting for review and approval of a construction and completion schedule for an extension of time. I don't know if there's any questions with any of those or comments.
I assume, Bob, the 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 dur- durations that are listed here are acceptable?
Most definitely. The the construction that'll be completed within the current funding will be done by September of twenty twenty-five. So yes, a two-year window is perfectly fine.
All right, we categorize the conditions. So for site improvements, the review of the final stormwater management system and required materials shall confirm that there shall be no increase in rate of stormwater flow caused by the project. Post-construction when compared to pre-construction conditions and that the stormwater management system is designed in conformity with DEP stormwater management standards and technical specifications. Um, unless otherwise approved, all exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant and shall be downcast, shielded, and shall not shine onto adjacent properties or streets. Um, I will say that Mattoon Street is actually not a public way. Uh, it's considered a driveway to the high school. And so although there is a little spill over, it was, you know, point one or point two foot candles, which uh, in some respects is considered negligible in terms of um, you know, visible light, uh, but it is not actually a public way. Um, condition eight, all work within the town right of way shall be reviewed and approved by town council prior to the issuance of a building permit and start of work. And although I said no work is in the right of way, we have this as a standard condition in case there is something that um you know, does take place there.
And so the nearest right of way is on Triangle Street?
Correct.
Okay.
And so this condition, if we want, you know, could be removed. I'm not sure how relevant it is. Um, I was working on a possible condition number nine. Uh, one of the suggestions was that there be an accessible drop off on Mattoon Street. And I'm not sure if that was actually shown on the plans. And so, um, Bob or Mark, I don't know if that's something that's, you know, I I think, Bobby acknowledged that it was maybe under consideration. And so I just want to know where that would be um, now. And I I can stop my share or to have a new share to show what we mean by that.
So right now, the accessible spaces are up on the at the sort of main parking lot area that's on the west side of the high school, right?
There's two existing spaces right at, on Mattoon Street, right at the parking lot itself. And then we're putting in two new metu- uh, two accessible spaces within the parking lot itself. What Nate is suggesting here is that it makes sense and it's a great suggestion that we move those accessible spaces down from the intersection of the parking lot to uh directly at our accessible um pathway into the site. I mean, it's something that will work with the DPW. It's not directly under the school district's control. Um, but we'll work with the DPW to to make that happen.
So you're saying it's not something you can actually commit to? Because it's not under your control?
Um, it's not under the school district's control. It's that portion of the property, um, as as Nate indicated, is it's actually town property. There's a sliver of property that goes across to the north side of Mattoon Street that is under town control and the balance of the site is under the school district control. So uh, it's very feasible and I would expect the DPW would have no problem uh working with us on that. So adding a condition to that effect, I don't believe would be a problem.
Right, so this right here is, is it, well, oh, whoops, was a town property and the rest was the school district property. And so um, you know, anyways, I don't know if if we want to have a condition stating that. I know that, like Bob said, they're working on it and it was suggested. And so you know, if we want to have some condition that it be.
Well, I mean, wouldn't the condition just simply obligate the school district to work with the town DPW to you know, coordinate the location of the accessible drop off or parking spaces as, you know, feasible or something? I mean, it's pretty sort of it's not particularly concrete.
Right. And so, yeah, like I said, you know, it's a kind of a difficult condition to enforce. It's, you know, we've already made the suggestion and so maybe that's good enough.
Okay, I I'm not sure I would pursue it.
All right. And I'll just share my screen again for that then. Um uh, and I don't know about the right of way, should, you know, if this is necessary either.
Um, I mean, it's not hurting anything.
Right.
So I would just leave it.
All right. And then under management plan, um, all trash pickup deliveries, the operation of construction, maintenance machinery and landscaping equipment shall be conducted during hours of seven AM to seven PM Monday through Saturday. Exemption shall include emergency vehicles, snow removal or other emergency situations as approved by the building commissioner. The product shall comply with and be managed in accordance with all terms of the management plan. Any alterations to this plan shall be approved by the planning board at a public meeting. And so, you know, if, for instance, there is another MO MOU or MOA with the school and something changes, that can be brought back to the board at a public meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, no work, including demolition on the property, shall take place prior to all approvals and permit being issued.
Okay, and then the construction conditions are, those are usually boilerplate. Uh, do we need to go through those too?
No, I'll just remove this. Um, yeah, I think they're all, they're, it's everything we normally include. Um, there hasn't been a construction logistics plan um submitted. And so it's something we do say, you know, shall happen. Uh, they'll have a meeting with staff.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's realistic. Um, it is a large site, so you know, uh, I'm not sure that there's actually any work taking place outside of the two properties. Uh, but I think all of this um is reasonable. And then uh let me just see what else we have here. Um, you know, uh, right, you know, um uh, you know, names and identification, you know, the site shall be fenced. Um, you know, dust and debris control. And I guess that is, you know, that's really it.
Since, since so little of this is vertical construction with the exception of the scoreboard, is there, is there a building permit involved?
Yes, yeah, there's a building permit involved. So it's, yeah, there's, there's um there's the light poles, there's twenty-foot-high fencing at the end of the north-south with, there'll be screening put up. Uh, and then the um uh, the walkways will also be inspected for accessibility. So, you know, all the new walkways are are meant to be universally accessible and and inspectors will confirm that they are, you know, the right slope when it's being built.
Okay.
So that's what they'll look at, just, you know, footings, uh, pathways. Um, a few things there. Um, and then completion of work, again, you know, these are kind of boilerplate. You know, as bill plans, we we do issue temporary certificates of occupancy if necessary through the building commissioner. We can impose uh any sureties. Uh, and then the final certificate of occupancy wouldn't be issued until, you know, um, everything is basically done and confirmed by the um, by the building commissioner and town engineer.
Okay. So Nate, do you see any reason we couldn't vote uh on this this evening?
No, I I, you know, I, so I mentioned, for instance, that you know, they're not showing a concession building. So, you know, when I've been at certain sporting events, parents or the school may just set up a table or two and they sell tickets right there and then they remove it. And that's, you know, that would be allowed. Um, if they want to do something different, it's a, you know, a new um, site plan in the future. And so, um, you know, they're showing the concrete pad for the bleachers. They're not showing the formal bleachers or game box. If that came back, that would have to be reviewed. And so, you know, there are bleachers now on the field. I think there are like five rows with wheels and those might be placed, you know, temporarily on the concrete pad. Um, and, you know, I don't, you know, that's really not a change from what's there. So I don't see any issues um why we, the board couldn't approve it tonight. Uh, if you wanted to wait for what the conservation commission could do, we could continue it to the eighteenth, knowing that we've reviewed it and on the eighteenth, it would just be then a quote, final vote. Um, so, you know, either way, it would work.
Okay. Um, one other question. When you do, when you build a uh a track and and field facility like this with a bleacher uh slab, uh, does it require uh any, any public restaurants?
Yeah, so there is, it's actually the plumbing code. It's actually the plumbing code. Requires restrooms. And so that's something that hasn't been. You know, quite determined. There is restrooms, uh, at Community Field. And then there's restrooms in the high school. There is a distance requirement and it has to be on an accessible route. Um, I think there are restrooms in in those locations. Um, you know, I'm not sure about the the distance and everything else. Um, you know, ironically, a lot of schools, and I think a lot of places, will then put, you know. Port-a-potties or temporary restrooms, which aren't necessarily. Um, you'd have to get a variance or an exception from the code, but. I'm not, you know, I'm, you know, I'm not sure that's been completely worked out yet in terms of what would be open. You know, is it the community field restrooms or the school restrooms? But there are restrooms available.
So Bob, um, how have you guys been thinking about that?
We we are aware of that. That concern and that need, we've brought it to the attention of the school district. Um, they haven't. Proposed a response to that concern at this point, but we we did indicate to them that it may be a condition of approval. You know, that the school district prior to use of the new facility shall. Um, make provisions for restroom facilities during public events or something along that line. Uh, because I. I can't speak on their behalf and say that, yes, they're going to open the school or no, they're not going to open the school, but, um. If the planning board feels that's an important item, you certainly have the ability to attach a condition to your approval. That requires them, um, to respond to that concern. It's again, as I said.
I assume there's, there's some sort of. Is there a plumbing permit that's likely to be? Required as part of this work? Or is it all just stormwater and? Sort of the type of, uh. Utilities that have, that do not involve a plumbing permit.
Yeah, there isn't an actual plumbing permit, but on the other hand, we have to comply with the requirements of plumbing code, which. It's not quite the same thing, but, um, the plumbing code does have an effect on how this facility gets used.
Right, yeah, this is considered a a facility. So whether, even though it's not a building per se, it's a, right, that code.
Okay, well, it sounds like you're aware of it and, um. That's as much as you can do now. Obviously, if if somebody requires you to put some. Restroom buildings out on the site, that's a, that's more than a de minimis change. So. I assume we would hear about it at that point.
Right.
Okay, um. Board members, are you? Uh, interested in approving? This with the, you know, conditions that are included in the. In Nate's, uh. In Nate's draft tonight and put this behind us? Or do you wanna wait until next? Meeting when they've gotten farther with the conservation commission? Johanna?
Sorry, uh, Doug, you know, and there's also requests for a few waivers, you know, just to mention, you know, like a traffic impact statement. You know, landscape plan and then a sign plan, uh. So although there's a scoreboard and then, you know, parking signs, those typically parking signs are those. Kind of required signs that aren't really part of a sign plan anyways. And so. Um, you know, and there's no other changes to circulation or or parking on the site.
So the three you you said were traffic impact, sign, a sign plan?
Yeah, right, and a landscape plan.
So it surprises me, maybe I didn't look through the package complete enough, but. You you don't have a landscape plan?
Landscape plan is is planting of grass.
So I I guess that surprises me, we would need a waiver for that, but. Whatever.
It's not a typical landscape plan in that there's, you know, other plantings. And so, uh. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be a waiver. I kind of agree that there's a.
Okay, Johanna?
I was just gonna say my inclination is to go ahead and. Act on this tonight and close the hearing and. Be done with it.
Alright. Um. How'd you like to make a motion, Johanna?
Um, I'd love to make a motion, but I was gonna see if there were any other board members who disagreed with that course of action, but.
I'm not seeing any other hands at all.
Great, okay, uh, let me see if I remember how to do this. So I moved to. Uh. Or what is it? It's like move that this is in accordance with. Uh. Public hearing and accept the conditions.
So we would approve, we would adopt the two findings that. That Nate had, one of which was that it's in accordance with eleven point two four or whatever. And the other is that the. Uh, I think it was the sign, wasn't it? Scoreboard is not a problem with the sign bylaw. And then the conditions that he had listed. Uh, with the addition of at least a waiver for the traffic, approved waiver of the traffic impact and sign plan. Uh, submissions that we're waiving those submissions. And that, um. Let's see, we proved the findings and conditions, we closed the hearing.
Yeah.
Um. And I thought there was one other thing, but I think that's it.
I think that's it.
Cam's nodding. Okay, so that's my motion.
Alright, well done, Jesse.
I'll second that.
Okay. Alright, um. Great, so any anybody else wanna say anything before we vote on that? Um. No hands, no hands. Johanna, your hand is still up. Okay, um, we'll go through it and Bruce has, uh, is, uh, abstaining. So we'll start Fred with you.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Lawrence?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Jesse.
Hi.
Johanna?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. That's six in favor, one abstention. The motion passes. Uh, Bob, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good luck and, uh. Can't wait to see it in the fall of next year.
Definitely. And unfortunate news is we have not come up with the conservation commission yet, so.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Good night. Alright, so our time is nine oh nine. We can go on to. Our third public hearing. And I will say in in advance of that. I guess I'll just, I'll just introduce it. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter forty A, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted. And is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard. Regarding the University Drive Overlay District. This hearing has been continued from October thirtieth and November twentieth of this year. Do you consider amending the zoning bylaw by adopting the University Drive Overlay District? As Article seventeen, and amending the official zoning map by adding the University Drive Overlay District. The overlay district would include properties on the east and west sides of University Drive between Northampton Road and Amity Street. And establishes its own requirements for only. Uh, mixed-use buildings, including dimensional standards, standards and conditions, and design guidelines. Uh, is there any board member disclosure? Okay. Um, so as as I said, this is a continuation from the two previous dates. Um, Nate, uh, would, do you wanna introduce anything? Obviously, the two of us were at the CRC meeting last night. Uh, be- before we start, I wanted to say, given the hour. Um, I was kind of thinking, maybe we would talk about what the board, uh, what CRC discussed last night. Um, and. Maybe not very much more before we continue this, uh, maybe to the eighteenth, but, uh. We'll see how the conversation goes. Nate?
Yeah, sure. I think the, um, I think continuing to the eighteenth is is. Is, uh, you know, a good suggestion. The CRC plans to meet on the seventeenth to talk about it again. And so really, last night was their first. Um, formal review of this, you know, after referral from town council. And so I think there were some, you know, good points brought up. Um, you know, I I will say before that. You know, there's been a number of public comments submitted that have been emailed to the board and, you know, they came in, a number of them came in at after three PM today. And so. Uh, they, most of them were uploaded to the packet and emailed to the board. And so. I'm not sure if everyone's had a chance to look at them. The owners of the Big Y property also submitted a letter saying that. You know, they really, you know, their properties, they highly value them, they're high performing. And they're occupied. At the same time, they support, they actually want to be in the overlay. They like the idea of flexibility long-term. Uh, and see it as, you know, an advantage. Um, at the, at, you know, at the CRC hearing last night. Um, you know, I think what, um, I'm just gonna share my screen. It might be easier. Uh, to, if that's visible for folks, the, I, you know, I, um, I'll work kind of north to south. Um, you know, there is Charles Lane right here, and there was considerations about, you know. If if it's five floors and only a ten-foot so rear setback, you know, what is, what what does it do to these properties? And so. You know, speaking with staff today. You know, we don't wanna create a setback that makes this building non-conforming, but we can at least match the existing setback. We could have a step back, you know, say after three floors. Still allow upper floors, but have them be stepped back some. And we'd write a condition that, you know, something like. Um, you know, um, uh, you know, adjacent properties with single-family, existing single-family homes have this additional kind of. Rear side setback. And it really would just apply here. There's no other kind of. I mean, it'd apply possibly here if there's something that happened back here, although it's wetland. And so. You know, I think that kind of consideration for Charles Lane is is something to to, um. To discuss. In the overlay, we have different setbacks, front setbacks along Amity, U Drive and Northampton Road. Uh, you know, twenty, twenty-four and twenty-five feet. And they asked whether or not, you know, is that necessary? And I think really the setbacks are meant to. Respond to each of the different street conditions and context. So I I think. I think it's fine, but if the board wanted to, you know, have a different kind of setback on each of the streets. You could, Northampton Road, the property line is, um. Far back from the curb. Uh, so twenty-five feet is pretty far back. So maybe on Northampton Road, it could be different. You know, I will say that, you know, the idea is to have the opportunity for wider sidewalks. And if you were allowing taller buildings to not have. Them too close to the street. And it's really difficult to say, well, in some areas. You know, the right-of-way is centered on the, or the road is centered in the right-of-way and other places it isn't. And so. Uh, but, you know, there could be some considerations for setback. They, you know, the big white property owners. Um, staff met with them and they are okay with having a hundred percent ground floor retail. As part of the mixed-use requirement for this part of, you know, for their properties. And so it. I think, you know, again, there could be a consideration for that this corner, we could write it in. That, you know, the mixed-use standard is a hundred percent ground floor. Uh, and the rest of it, it would be what's in the existing. Overlay. Um, there's some questions about multiple buildings on a property and what is the street-facing facade? And so. In the, uh. Standards and can, or in in here in the mixed-use requirement. We say at least seventy-five percent of the street-facing facade of the ground floor. Uh, needs to, you know, have, you know. Be non-residential to a depth of twenty-four feet. And that parking can be allowed. And the remaining of the area, the remainder of the area, there are questions like, well, what does, could residential be in the other area too? Um, and the answer is, you know, yes. Uh, but I, you know, again, I I think there could be some clarifying language about what 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 this all means. Um, if there's two buildings. Um. You know, I, you know, if there are things that overlay wouldn't. Uh, maybe couldn't control, but I think, you know, like I do. I, you know, if this were in place and there is more density there, I do think. Then it becomes a conversation with PVTA in terms of bus stops or incre- you know, increased frequency of of routes. To serve University Drive. And so. Um, although outside the overlay, I think it's an interesting idea. Um, you know, where are the bus stops and what happens if we start getting density here? You know, could there be another bus stop? I think that's. Um, you know, something that staffs, you know, discussed and it was discussed last night, again, not necessarily. Um, regulated by the overlay, but a consideration. Um. Um, I think, you know. Uh, the west, we, there's the access drive on the west side of University Drive. And we're having a wide setback with intent of it becoming, you know, a ten-to-twelve-foot-wide multi-use path. And then we slowly abandon. The sidewalk that's right along the road here. And I actually don't think that's a very difficult thing to do. Um, you know, if the project on this corner happens, you know, then, you know, all of a sudden this sidewalk becomes. Um. You know, it's redundant, but I think the town could get easements. For public access and for maintenance along the private property, because most of the access drive in this multi-use path would be. Outside the public right-of-way. Um, but the town has done that in other places. And speaking with staff today, we don't think that's an issue. Um, but I do think, you know, like I said, some of the setbacks, the height. Uh, you know, are things to consider. The town has pretty strong wetland and stormwater regulations in place. And so the board has discussed. Whether or not we need to mention it in the overlay, um, but that was discussed last night. Um, and yeah, I I think that, you know, that would be it. I will, I just wanna annotate quickly on my screen. And speaking with staff, so you know, say this property redeveloped and a building did this. The way the bylaw would be written is that, you know, this. Right here and this is street-facing and it would be subject to the mixed use, even if the step back was. Quite a bit. The question is now, what if there's a second building here? You know, does it still have a street-facing facade that needs to have the mixed-use component? And, you know, the building commissioner was saying, you know, and other staff said, well, yes, this. Right here is still street-facing, even though it's not visible from the street. And so. I think, you know. It's a, it's an interesting question, you know, if if there is the possibility of having a second building on a property. Do we want it to, you know? It can be a building that complies with the base zoning. So this could be a mixed-use building up front, and then this is an office building out back. Or it could be an apartment building. That's limited to number of units in our bylaw as a, you know, with the lot area and everything. Or would we allow a mixed-use building in the back here? That has some other kind of mixed-use, um, proportion or standard. Uh, so, you know, I think. You know, there's a few things there to discuss. Uh, I don't know, Doug, if I've missed anything, but.
Well, I I think you've covered most of what I had noted last night. Um. And I guess, uh, I see, I see two hands up already. Um, and I will call on you in a moment, but, um. Nate, uh, should we be? Uh, or should you be working on a draft all with with some revisions? You know, we we know we were talking about changing the maximum height. From sixty-five feet to seventy-two. Um, obviously, the topics that you brought up last night. Or that were brought up last night that you've just summarized. Could lead to some other revisions. And, um, is that, would that be a productive thing for us to do to say? Here's the revisions that based on what we've heard and we would recommend to town council. Is that a deliverable that we should be? Off- offering as a part of our. You know, our hearing process.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. So, you know, what's? Uh, what we have is the proposal that's being reviewed. You know, and the planning board is making recommendations back to town council. Uh, in terms of how they wanna vote a possible zoning, the zoning amendment. And so. If the board thinks that some of those things that were discussed last night and that I mentioned could be incorporated into the bylaw. I think it would be a good to have a discussion tonight and then staff can, you know. Add the, add language to that effect that can be reviewed on the eighteenth. And so if we think. Clarification about a second building or multiple buildings. Um, the hundred percent, you know, Charles Lane setbacks, whatever. I think all that is. Um. You know, right, is important. And so what we. Would do is have a marked-up version of the bylaw that would go back to council with a memo from the planning board saying, you know, if that, if we're to move forward. You know, here are the eight changes or whatever that we think is, you know, should be voted on by council as part of this bylaw. And it, you know, we could enumerate it in the memo and then have it as, you know, technical language as part of the draft bylaw.
Okay. Alright, so we may, uh. We may wanna have kind of a sort of topic by topic. At least a straw poll, if not an actual vote about. You know, do we want Nate to think about adjusting the setbacks? Do we wanna have some language that changes the percentage of? Do we want to have some language that changes the percentage of required? Commercial space on the southern portion of the, of the, of the, uh, overlay area. Um, do we want to make special provisions when you're adjacent to residential? A residential zone or Zen residential property? How do we feel about a second building on the property back from or behind the front building? Uh, is that, could that be just a plain apartment building? Um, would that be okay, or, you know, what should it be? Um, so those are three or four. I probably missed one, Nate, but, um, you know. Let's see what, what people think, um, I think it's worth thinking about most of those. Um, Karen.
Just want to put in a plea also that we have a dedicated bicycle path along this, if we start out without it. You know, it's so necessary, we're trying to convert everyone to bicycling and walking. And it's just not gonna be that.
Are, are you talking about the existing path on the east side of, uh, University Drive?
Just, uh, as we consider the setbacks and the sidewalks and things like that, that, that. We consider how we're gonna also allow for a dedicated path somewhere or professional that can figure that out.
Okay.
That at this point.
So you don't consider the existing swift way to be a dedicated path?
Um, does it go all the way? Yeah, I, we only need one. Do we need one on both sides, that's the question, yeah.
Okay. All right, um, Lawrence.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, I, I think, um, uh. I, I like the idea of, of being able to sort of. Review each of these things in the context of, of what changes would look like. Um, so, so I, I was gonna propose maybe, you know, the, the issues that, that Nate just raised. If, if we could just say, all right. Take a crack at, at making those adjustments and we'll come back and, and. Talk about it on the eighteenth rather than, than sort of diving into hypotheticals here. I don't know, I don't know how that strikes folks, but, um. I know from my perspective, it would be really helpful to, to sort of see what Nate and staff's recommendations of, of, um. What responding to some of those concerns could look like and, and, you know, really discuss the specifics, uh, once we're able to see them in context.
Okay. All right, so a little less conversation tonight and more to look at next time. Any other comments from board members at this point? Bruce.
I, I'm interested in the, uh, in the affordable fraction. And because I do remember that we discussed, uh. Lifting it if we were going to raise the, uh, increase the, the number of stories. Uh, and I frankly can't remember, um, how that went, but it seems that, uh, at the moment, there's no reference. To any particular affordable fraction in the bylaw, uh, 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 a fraction of.
Where, I, isn't our standard percentage applicable to this?
I think it is, and the question is, uh, should we, uh. Should we take, uh, should we, should we regard the, the offer of? Uh, or the opportunity of, uh, a greater number of stories. To be an offering that we might reasonably, um, get something for, shall we say? And then increase that, uh, uh, percentage from, I suppose it's twelve percent. Uh, to something, something more, fifteen, eighteen, twenty. Maybe I wasn't, it's, it's quite likely that I wasn't, uh, in on that, uh, the meeting when that was discussed. Because I guess I have missed one meeting of this, so, uh, is there a reason why we wouldn't or why we haven't, uh. Decided to keep with that, uh, uh, goal that we discussed. Months ago, I mean, that was generally when we began talking about this, it was considered an opportunity that we should, uh. Take advantage of, and, uh, and at that, at the moment, we are not taking advantage of that, uh. Was there a reason why we decided not to pursue that?
Well, I don't know that there was a consensus of opinion about that. Uh, you know, it was discussed, it was brought up, but it never really. Uh, it didn't make itself in, didn't make its way into the draft, um.
No, I, I would.
You know, nobody's particularly brought it up in a while.
Yes, well, I, uh, and then I feel like I've dropped the ball, um. Uh, because I think it seems that, uh, a reasonable ask in return for, uh, the offer of, um, a greater. Event, a greater density.
Okay. Are there others that feel like the twelve percent that we are already requiring should be raised? Karen is raising her hand. Johanna?
I feel like. I would be interested in just. I don't know, like, having more information about. How. Like. I don't quite know what the sweet spot is, you know, I don't want to put, like, I agree that, um. Amherst likely needs more affordable housing, I don't know enough about how we arrived. At twelve percent. For the inclusionary housing bylaw and like, how did we determine that was the right number? And what would the impact be, I know some of the people who've written to the board. Are suggesting twenty-five percent. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if Nate or others have insights into. You know. The potential consequences of nudging it up.
Nate, anything you want to offer, I mean, I guess the first thing that comes to mind for me is the higher the percentage of affordable housing. The higher the rents are in all the other units. So. You know, because they're subsidizing the below market rates. Um, and so. You know, everything else just gets that much more expensive, and maybe that's. Maybe that's, and, you know, that, that could be. Enough of an impact that they developers don't want the higher, the, the additional floor, and then we've. Not gotten the units that we want. Um, you know, when I think about what do I want from this, I want a lot of units. Uh, I want a lot of people living there who don't choose to live in the neighborhoods. Um, so I, I'd like to keep the barriers low to maxing out the build out of this area. Jesse.
Yeah, I'm similarly torn about that, to be honest, um. For reasons you mentioned, Doug, also, I, so Jenna raised a point in her comments that. Were below other places, neighboring towns, other mastercits, locations, is that true? I just don't have that information, like, is our current standard of twelve percent? In the mix with other places? Or do we, it's basically what Johanna's saying, do we need to think about, is it the right level? So I guess I'd like some more info about that, um, but then likewise, Doug, I think. The real goal here is, is max. Student housing, so it's a little bit at odds with that, even though that might be a short sighted view, because in. Twenty years, they might have different purposes.
Yeah, so when the inclusionary zoning bylaw was written, um. Uh, uh, amended, um, not the most recent time, but a few years before that, we hired a consultant to look at. We had P D P C do it, and then we had a consultant look a little bit, what, you know, what, what is across the state in terms of percentage of inclusionary zoning? Or affordable units, and really it's dependent on each market. And so, you know, twelve, at first, it was, you know, some communities do ten, nine. Maybe more than twelve, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's kind of like, what is the right percentage that won't defer, deter development, but still allow you to get what, you know? Get investment in building and still have affordable units, um. And so, you know. The twelve percent hasn't necessarily changed the, you know, how, you know. You know, what's happening in Amherst, I feel like there's still development, uh. You know, could it be higher in the overlay? I think some people will say, well, we're losing out if we don't increase the percentage, but I would say that if we have more units. A percentage is a proportionality, and so if we have more units because of a six floor, we still get more affordable units. Um, and we still get more market rate units, and, and then we also have the added, added benefit of taxes and more residents. And more mixed use buildings on University Drive to have a better streetscape, so. I don't see it as we're losing anything if we keep the twelve percent. Um, the CRC did ask, you know, if there could be a way to have. Um, affordable units that maybe aren't capital A affordable, that could be a higher than an eighty percent A M I. And I explained that that would be a local, um, kind of a restriction and a local responsibility to enforce and monitor that, and so. You know, it's really difficult to say, well, let's have a graduated, um, housing with income above what is. Regulated by the subsidizing housing inventory and what, you know, is kind of by law affordable housing. I mean, it could be possible, I just think it would be more work for the town and something that we, you know, we haven't really done. Um, you know, I, I think increasing the percentage a bit could be possible, I think once you go to twenty percent, to me, that's a comprehensive permit. And you might as well be doing a forty R district, a smart growth district, and having something completely different, um. You know, if we're at twenty or twenty-five percent, I would just say we might as well just, you know. Um, just, you know, to me, that's like, that is, you know, a comprehensive permit for every project. And really restrictive, and I, I think that's, that's a lot. Um, you know, if the goal was. Say that proportionality of affordable housing, like I said, I think there are other mechanisms we could be using than what we've been working on, um. Uh, and maybe it's appropriate in some other places. Um, you know, in town, like a forty R, forty S smart growth district. Um, so, yeah, I mean, the council asked, the CRC asked, and it had been discussed, I think Bruce previously with the planning board. I, I, I don't think it ever, like, um, Doug said, I don't think it ever got to the point where. It was a strong enough opinion to have a change in the inclusionary zoning, it had been discussed about whether or not we could have increased percentage or. An increased, you know, above twelve percent, say, up to a certain percent could be a different A M I, that would be a local piece. Uh, you know, HUD does publish a hundred and fifty percent of A M I. Uh, so, you know, again, we don't want the town to be trying to calculate median income. Um, so there is a metric for that, but then we would have to enforce it locally. And it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be on the, um, the developer necessarily to do some of those things or the state. So I guess it's really what the, you know, what the board thinks is worthwhile.
Okay, thanks, Nate. Bruce.
I suppose if I think about it a little bit, uh, we could say that ten percent typically statewide has been a magic number. Because if the town has more, if a town has more than ten percent, they're not enthralled to, uh. Uh, the forty B process, uh, and so we could say, well, we're. And, and this town has, I think, for the whole of the time that I've lived in town, forty years or so. Uh, we've been, uh, at or above ten percent. So, uh, I guess we could think that twelve percent was a, a pretty laudable thing, it's, uh, it's higher than the. The, 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 the goal of the state, uh, so far as what I just said was concerned. But, uh, Doug, to your que- to, to your question about whether the, uh. The taking, uh, whether, whether the, uh. Uh, the loss of rent from an afforded, from a higher fraction of affordable units would lift the rent in the, uh. Market rate units to cover it, my sense, which may be wrong. Is that the, uh, the, the land cost? And some of the development cost of that land for. Uh, for X units, if it was only four stories, has now become, uh. You know, something more than X, and so you're building more houses, uh. On that land, so the fraction of, uh, land cost for per unit drops. And that's where. That's where the, the, the difference is made up, theoretically. One shouldn't necessarily have to raise the, the market rents, but. That, of course, is speculative on my part, I mean, there seems to be a conceptual basis for it, but, uh, that's about as far as it can go. So I, I think, uh, uh, I'm, I'm glad to have the conversation, I'm not as, uh, I, I'm not a strong advocate for. Pushing beyond, uh, twelve, but I think we should if we feel we can, and I think I would, uh, perhaps ask, uh. Staff to think about whether lifting it to fifteen percent. I think we should deliberate on that, because it does seem that the. The offer of additional stories is something of a gift. Uh, it's a gift, if you like, that we will benefit from by having more units. I agree with the rest of you that that is the goal, and I'm, I'm very keen usually on not taking my eyes off the ball. So that's the ball. Uh, to the extent that we can, uh. Have the additional units and a few more affordability units, I'd like to, I, I, I'd like it, I'm not a strong advocate for that. But my curiosity still exists to some degree.
Okay. All right, Fred.
Uh, I don't agree, Bruce, that that's the ball. I've strongly supported this all along, because if we create. Places that, uh. That will be presumably primarily occupied by students. That shifts the market. Uh, in a beneficial way in neighborhoods. And that, to my way of thinking, is that's why this has a major public benefit. And, uh, it's been, there's always been the reason I've supported it. And I think probably leaving, leaving at twelve percent is appropriate, I think, uh, Nate made the appropriate argument. And, uh, uh. Yeah, I, I think that is the ball.
Well said, Fred, thank you.
Jesse.
Just a quick comment, a possible data point, uh, Doug, you might know differently than I've heard, but I think Fieldstone, the new. Complex is not fully subscribed at all. Probably because the rents are so high, so to your point, Bruce, about rents getting pushed up by other mechanisms, I think there's clearly a. Upper limit to what. That even the student market will tolerate. This was my interpretation from the current events there.
I actually don't have any information on the current occupancy, I know that it initially, the first year, it didn't have. Full occupancy, but. Since then, I don't know. Nate?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, you know, I just ran some numbers quickly, and so if we change it from twelve to fifteen percent for affordable units. You know, at a development of eighty to a hundred units, the net gain is three units. When you get to about, you know, a hundred and ten. Beyond, you know, up to like, you know, a bit beyond that, you know, the net gain is four units, and so there is, you know. There is a gain, um, you know, if you, if you, if we think most developments are gonna be under a hundred and fifty units. You know, your gain is three to four units of development if you increase the percentage, and so I just want to say that, you know, so an eighty unit development. A hundred unit development would, you know. Yield the same, you know, three unit difference in affordability if we change it from twelve to fifteen percent, so. You know, four twenty-two Amity, uh, is, you know, say roughly ninety units. With a sixth floor, they're gonna add. Um, I think it was twenty units, twenty-two units, and so, you know, we would gain four additional. You know, instead of, we gained four, you know, three additional units. Uh, if it was, you know, fifteen percent instead of twelve percent. You know, so there is, you know, there is a gain, it's not, you know, it's. It's not, to me, it's not, um, too large, but there is a gain. I'm gonna also say, we do require the sixth floor to be stepped back a distance, we don't prescribe it, but, you know, it's not as if the whole building will cover. The, you know, the footprint will be all the way up, you know, through the sixth floor, and so. Um, you know, I think that step back does decrease the potential for additional units on that addition, on that upper floor. And it's the permit granting authority that would kind of see what is an appropriate step back there, so it could be different depending on the building design. Um, we did hear and mention last night that. The Amity Street project may or may not be adding a sixth floor, you know, they had, there is potential that they were talking about it and applying for a variance. Uh, for the zoning board amended variance and some other things, but, you know, given. and some other things. But, you know, given the construction costs and nature of everything that could be changing, the project is still under review by the planning board for site plan review. So we won't get, you know, we can't get into it too much, but you know, it's not, it's not a simple answer that a few percentage points is good or bad. I think, you know, it'll get us some more units. Is it going to deter development? I don't. I don't necessarily think so. I think anything beyond 15% though, does get pretty steep in terms of kind of the offsets and what we're asking for. Because, you know, the there are wetlands, there, most of it is redevelopment and infill. And so you know, more units does require parking and different things. And so someone could opt not to do a sixth floor, right? So all these are just opportunities. And so a developer still could come in and use the overlay and only do four floors, because that's what they think is appropriate and what they can offer on that site. And so, you know, I guess if we wanted to change the inclusionary zoning, it maybe is only applicable if there is a sixth floor as part of the project. I wouldn't want to change it and say, you know, some increased percentage just because they're using the overlay. I would have it only apply if they do use a sixth floor. And so to me, that's how I would, I would write it if we wanted to do it that way.
All right, time is 9:43. So having had this conversation, is there, is there? You know, are there additional people than the two people who initially said they were interested in in raising this, other than Bruce and Karen? I think are others? Would others like Nate to think about raising the percentage? If it's if it's just two, I think maybe we pass on that at least for tonight. I mean, we will. We will be continuing to talk about this at the next meeting. But I'm not seeing any hands for the or adding to that discussion. All right. I'm I'm mindful of the time. It's quarter of 10 and Nate, do you feel like we need to give you more direction right now? Or or, you know, you kind of heard what we heard at CRC and, I mean, you could draft language responding to each of those things. You know, just because you might need it. If not for us, you may need it for CRC.
Yeah, I think if, you know, you know, it sounded like the, there's interest from the board to capture, you know, those six or eight comments and considerations, that's that's fine. If there's other things the board you know, thought of since we last discussed this, sure. I think some of it was the height and the 100% ground floor retail. So, you know, I think I think that's fine, you know, if if there's other things too, we we had asked the CRC members to send comments through the chair to staff. So if board members have any thoughts, they can send it through Doug to staff and we can or to me directly, and we can, you know, incorporate those or look at those. You know, I think that's all fine.
Okay, Mitch, Jesse?
Thanks. I did want to raise a communication question again. It's come up a few times. And I think in plenty of work about just making sure all the current residents and our commercial residents and owners are aware of the conversations as we heard from the Cooley representative. He just happened to find out about it. Sounds like we reached out to Big Y, right, Nate? So I don't know, what what can planning board or what can we do to make sure all the current occupants are aware and can contribute to the conversation?
Yeah, so typically in a zoning amendment process, we don't notify property owners. Yeah, we did. When we sent the, for the first hearing, when we mailed the butter notifications, we email, we mailed all the property owners. We sent them the legal notice, the memo that went to town council, and I think the overlay map. And so every owner was mailed. Yeah. And so, you know, that's why Cooley Dickinson came to the first hearing. And another property owner reached out by phone, had some questions, didn't really state an approval one way or the other, but and so, you know, that's, you know, that's how we end up contacting Big Y. They had questions. And so, you know, we did do that outreach. Because, you know, it was, say, like 20 property owners. And so, you know.
Business owners get notification or only the property owners?
Only the property owners. I know the, I know that the Roberts Group and others have reached out to some of the store owners. And so I know, you know, Big Y is interested and thinks it's a great opportunity. I don't know what other of some of the other operators or stores think, but.
Seems like those will be valuable opinions also.
Okay. All right. I guess I'll. Is there other discussion that people want to have tonight? And I'm gonna make a why don't we go to public comment? Are there public, are there members of the public who'd like to comment on this overlay proposal at this point? We will be continuing this hearing to our next meeting. And CRC is also having their hearings through this month as well. Okay, I don't see any, any hands from public. I don't see any hands from the board. Maybe it's just the hour. So I will make a motion that we continue this public hearing to December 18th. Pam, what time should we be setting? Is it? Do we have other hearings already committed for this evening, for that evening?
Nate, when is the site plan review for 422 Amity Street coming back? Is that 12:18?
It is.
Is it at 6:50 PM? Is that correct? 10 minutes, 10 minutes to seven? Oh, boy. I think we should do 6:35 then.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll move that we continue this hearing to 6:35 on December 18th. Would anybody like to second that?
Second.
All right, Lawrence?
Can I have just one second? The this is, okay, thank you so much.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, then we'll go through the roll call to continue. Bruce?
Hi.
Fred?
Hi.
Lawrence?
Hi.
Jesse?
Hi.
Johanna?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. That's unanimous. All right, motion passes. We will continue. Time is 9:50. And let's see what's left. I'm gonna suggest that under under general housing discussion, we had listed as the second item, discussion of a potential overlay for existing apartment complexes that we not discuss that tonight, but we wait for that at another time. Then we went through everything else, including report of chair. I don't, haven't got anything I want to say now that we've had the full meeting. Nate, anything else you want to report as staff?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, so does anybody else else have anything they want to say before we adjourn? Doesn't look like it. I have, the time is 9:51 and we are adjourned. Thank you all. See you in two weeks. Good night, Pam.
Good night, good night. You never find the recording button. Here we go. That's recording. Stop.